Well, welcome everyone. Thanks so much for coming. We'll go ahead and we'll get started tonight with our riveting agenda. It's very -- got a lot of controversy to it, it looks like. So, first of all, let's go ahead and get started at the beginning and I'll -- the Commission wants to take a look at the minutes and let me know if there are any comments, amendments, or took a motion for approval. We approve the ones in the night. Oh, no, they weren't in there, right? They didn't open correctly at the last meeting. So, we are approving both the amendments from the November 9th and the one two weeks before the 26th of October.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from the last two meetings.
Okay.
I'm trying to load them up because I can never connect to the Wi-Fi here.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th meeting.
I will second those.
I've got a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstains? Great, motion carries. Secondly, report from the Chair. I have nothing to report. Madam Vice Chair?
Nothing at this time.
And a report from the Director?
I just wanted to remind people of the training that's tomorrow night. If you can make it, that would be great. And that we only have one meeting, well, one more meeting, real meeting after tonight this year, so only December 14th. There's no second meeting in December, so that's it.
So with that, we'll go and move on to the citywide draft, the Transit Master Plan. Welcome staff back up. We had kind of a review of this at our last meeting and we were gonna take a deeper look. The, I believe, the public comments section we left open. And so, do, I don't know, if staff has anything additional they'd like to add? Or if, do you have anything you want to add? Or does anyone in the Commission feel like they want a review or any of the highlights? I think we were all here for the last meeting, right?
Yes.
You might want additional, like, review? Want them to go over anything? Or do you want to give them a general overview? Or do you want to ask questions? Well, seeing none. Do you guys have anything to add? No comments?
We've had a few comments filter in. Largely, they've been supportive. They've been pretty reflective of the summary that I sent you before. A couple of new things that we're looking at how to address in the plan.
Great, well, I'll see if there are any public comments on it in the cards. Is George Chapman here? Oh, we're going to the public comments. Of course, and sorry, you can step back. Yes.
Okay, I'm asking, my name is George Chapman. I'm asking you not to approve the citywide Transit Master Plan. There are a whole bunch of problems with it. It's way too early. It needs a lot more public comment. When I filed my public comments on November 7th, the deadline date, there were 33 people on Open City Hall. There are 400 now. That means that the comments that have been received, hundreds of comments that have been received, are not included in the citywide Transit Master Plan. That's an insult to the citizens that you should want to hear from. So, I'm asking you not to approve it. In addition, one of the most important projects for Salt Lake City is the airport tracks reconfiguration. That's not in here. It should be. So, that's another issue. The other big issue is Salt Lake City Council actually sent a downtown master plan discussion and decision on whether or not to have a rail system back to the transit plan. There's a little note added to the approval of the downtown plan that the rail project is contingent on what the master transit plan says. So, that is, what happened is the master transit plan didn't look at that note. It said, "We're gonna just put in what the downtown plan said." So, Salt Lake City Council is saying, "We'll look at the transit master plan," transit master plan is saying, "We'll look at Salt Lake City Council." There's a disconnect there and it needs to be taken care of. There are a whole bunch of other issues. You don't talk about elderly encouragement to use high passes. You don't talk about the financial constraints. If you build $100 million downtown streetcar, and that's what it's gonna cost locally, you are going to take that money out of local increased bus service, no matter what you do. You're also talking about very expensive buses, BRTs, excuse me, on 900 East State Street, a whole bunch of other places, that really could use better bus service, period. And instead of taking money away from better bus service and putting it into BRTs, you should be having better neighborhood bus service. The financial constraints aren't listed in the Transit Master Plan. You don't have priorities. And what happened when you did it with, there's also a mountain transportation plan, neutral on there, and that's the canyon tunnel system. You shouldn't have any of this stuff in here. It's a very complicated plan, hundreds of pages. I don't have time to tell it all to you. I sent something in, but it's many, many pages. This plan is not ready for primetime. I encourage you not to approve it. Thanks for listening. Any questions? Comments? Thanks again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this issue? Judy? Just please state your name in the microphone for the record.
Call me Grace. Step on his foot. I'm Judy Short from the Sugar House Community Council. And I think you know from the number of times you see me, we've been pretty busy. And all of a sudden, we realized this was coming at us and we hadn't had a chance to look at it. So, I asked Larry Migliaccio to look at the plan, since he's Chair of our Transportation Committee. He's home tonight sick as a dog, but he did read it. He's a transportation planner, recently retired, so he understands all the stuff that's in there that probably Juliana wrote that makes no sense to me at all. So, let me just read to you his plans. I think the basic thing we're after is bus service. Get us a way to get from here to there. And we need a lot of it, and we need it soon. It's great to have all the streetcars, but that's down the road. That takes a lot of money. Buses are cheaper. Paving the streets needs to happen. There's so many infrastructure needs that we have, that we think this ought to be staged. Like, in the next five years, we will have the grid system of buses up and running every 15 minutes and make it work. And then maybe 15 years from now, we can start talking about streetcars and things that cost huge amounts of money. So, what Larry says is a simplification and a back-to-basics approach should be taken. The Tier 1, Tier 2 approach with all the niceties mentioned is too complex and delays a usable bus system. Let's forget Tier 1 and simply go to Tier 2. And the routes, add the routes now and the amenities later. Let's work to get the public on the buses. We all know the main issue is lack of routes and frequency of service. Other items mentioned are good, but should be secondary. Implement the grid now. Security and crime mitigations are not mentioned. Energy-efficient, non-polluting transit system is not in the goals. We should favor the grid model in Salt Lake and radial model outside Salt Lake with parking at the outer nodes. Half-mile between parallel grid routes is okay, provided transfer points are provided at grid route crossings. This should be the starting point. Public education program on how to use the system. I think there are a lot of people that'd be riding the bus if they had more information on how to make it work for them. Page 2 to 11 states others are working on foothill drive. This plan ought to be incorporated with the foothill drive plan. They ought to be seamlessly merged together. There's no coordination indicated in this. And there's no transit hubs with parking. We really need to have park and rides. The Sugar House streetcar is a great example of that. Lot more people would ride it if they could get their car somewhere close so they could walk home when they get back from work. So, it should be more specific. Say what we're gonna do and by when. And start with the buses. Thanks. Questions?
We're trying to keep questions just for comment, for the portion. We'll do questions afterwards. And then Don Butterfield just submitted a card for, listen, you wanna come up and speak? And again, just state your name in the microphone for the public record, please.
Don Butterfield. And thanks for the opportunity to talk about the Transit Master Plan, which I believe that I would recommend that you all just table it and send it back to the Transportation Department and let them redo this. Their modus operandi put them in a situation where they have, in my opinion, neglected the simple and elegant solutions to our transportation problems that will impact us now, instead of five to 10 years down the road. The Governor's Office of Economic Development tells us that by 2030, our population will double. And we can see that in the congestion that's coming along now, and each year it seems to get worse and worse. And these projects, streetcars are, they're a good idea in a mature routes that are already heavily used and can work that way. But when we're starting out and needing to establish good, solid best scheduling and 15-minute frequencies that people can rely on, we need to do that now. The simple fact about it also is that, as you all may be aware, that in affordable housing and other housing in the city, you know, there's just not a lot of vacant land around to build. And where are these people gonna go if they can't live in the city? Well, they're gonna commute in. And that's gonna provide more problems, more congestion for us. And it just keeps adding more and more each year. So, the simple and elegant solutions are buses. And these rail projects are just too expensive, holds the city to money that we don't need to be spending on these projects. With some of that money, we can also spend on our infrastructure that needs to be done, our roads, our sidewalks. There's a lot of work that needs to be done that we've put off when things were tight and our budgets were really, really tight. And so, you know, we're trying to catch back up. Well, if we keep spending all of our money on projects that don't solve the problem but way down the line, you know, it just puts us further and further behind where we could catch up and make a real difference back into our city.
Thank you. We're trying to keep comments about two minutes. If you could wrap up here.
And the biggest thing that right now, I want to talk against the South Davis BART. And an enhanced bus would work just as well, and it's less expensive than using that BART coming down from South Davis County. And I can understand that that would be a good asset, but we still don't know about ridership. We think it would be good, but an enhanced bus would be a better solution, a cheaper solution than a BART would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there additional comments from the public on the Transit Master Plan? Great, if we could have staff come back up real quick. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing portion on this topic. And I've got a couple of questions, I think, for you guys to kind of respond to some of the public. Do you guys okay if I just go through my list? I haven't done it before. So, one, I mean, there was a comment about, obviously, the Open City Hall closed down on the 7th, and comments coming in before going from 7 to 400 people being active. Could you talk about what maybe Mr. Chapman was getting at there and if those 400 people were actively participating in this topic or something else? Just kind of for the record.
So, all the comments that we received were considered. And Open City Hall reports two things. It reports the number of people who visit and just look at the topic, and then it reports the number of people who actually submit a response. And it's very consistent with most of the things we do to receive a lot more visits than we do comments, pretty significantly more. A lot of people will just look and say, "Oh, okay, I don't have any real issues with this," or, and so they don't submit comments. But that's pretty standard. And for us, we've communicated throughout our outreach process that we accept comments throughout the process regardless, and so...
Since we've closed the Open City Hall, people still could have commented.
Yeah, and I'm getting emails and phone calls still now and incorporate all those comments. It's just that for the purposes of summarizing the comments for you for our last meeting, we had a closed date so that we had a cutoff for what would be summarized in the staff report.
You could prep, do your prep work.
Yep.
And then I assume those comments are available to public record? If anyone wanted to see them, the City Council could review them as part of their review process?
Yep.
Great. Secondly, I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about the role of a master plan and budgeting in the master plan? You know, is the master plan intended to kind of as a general guiding document that's helping to, you know, understand priorities for which City Council people in future years can place budget priorities around? Or is a master plan typically something that will have specific budgets that we should be weighing items against each other, like the public has reflected? Just talk about the purpose of a master plan, please. You can take that one if you'd like.
Please do.
So, yeah, the Transit Master Plan, or any master plan like it, is intended to be more a policy direction. We do include some high-level cost analysis so we can prioritize. For staff guidance, what we do want to take to legislative bodies to ask for resources, whether it's City Council or other funding opportunities. So, there is some level of priority associated with what's the most important thing to work on? That might, some of those things might be very expensive, and so that's part of the consideration, but it's not the only consideration. But it's really more about a policy, policy guidance and setting the vision, the 20-year vision for, in this case, transit for Salt Lake City. And that's the other element, is it's a locally-based plan. So, this is the transit vision for Salt Lake City proper. UTA does a pretty good job of providing regional transit. And so, it does, our local plan does respond to a lot of work that UTA has done for their regional system, but we wanted to take a look and see what would, what would we need to invest in Salt Lake City to improve transit for Salt Lake City itself.
And then there was certainly a number of comments related to bus service. And I feel like I haven't looked at the plan last night, that you do address bus service and do address rapid bus service and frequency and timing and hours and so forth, and recommendations for those in the plan. I'm wondering if, you know, maybe from your review, being at open houses or from comments you've received, if you could maybe elaborate of what maybe some of the, some more specifics? I'm just not sure what they were referring to that might be missing from the plan. Maybe you might know, know better.
My guess is that we just need to communicate more clearly because I think we're in agreement with those comments, so the...
You've outlined routes, you talk about a grid system.
Correct.
You outlined frequency of service, hours of operation, recommendations for extension, rough routes.
The plan is largely mode neutral, so we didn't say necessarily that it's only buses that we're talking about. But we did identify the only corridors where we would want to, so, streetcar as an example is a very high-intensive capital investment. It would require a high-intense capital investment to make that happen. So, we didn't, we didn't necessarily plan out where streetcar lines would go. We said where it would make sense to invest a lot in capital. And that would be a corridor like Second South, where we already have really great bus service. And if, in the future, we wanted to accommodate more growth, that's a corridor where it might make sense to invest in a higher level of capital that could be streetcar. But the system as a whole in the plan, what makes the most sense, given the ridership gains and the other goals that we have in mind, the bus-based mode does make the most sense for 90-plus percent of the corridors that we analyzed and proposed in the plan.
And is outlined in the plan?
Correct.
Yes.
And then you, I mean, another general comment was about, you know, really prioritizing frequency of bus service over infrastructure improvements? And I mean, I know there's certainly the conversation about a streetcar is one deal, but also your plan outlines things like improved bus stops and signage and, you know, things that help, infrastructure items that kind of help bus service. You feel like those infrastructure items are important to boost ridership, not just, and that's why we're investing them, not because you can't just increase frequency of service, you also need infrastructure improvements to improve, is that correct?
Right.
Most of those investments are fairly small investments. So, for example, I may have mentioned this last time, the 200 South corridor, we put shelters and benches and ADA accessibility and saw about an 18% increase in ridership from before to after. So, they're pretty small-scale investments, but they seem to have a pretty big payoff. And it's similar with signage and wayfinding. If people can find transit, they're more likely to ride it. But really, the foundation, the core of the plan is about frequent service. So, every 15 minutes all day, every day.
And then, there's a point about security and elderly not being addressed in the plan. Could you maybe touch on those two items?
So, specifically, we are looking at, and I think the comment with respect to elderly was about education and promotion, and that is...
Access to high passes.
And access to high passes. So, for the high pass, we make a recommendation of fare and pass programs, expanding and refining those. And we are actually looking at youth, at seniors, at some, at family passes, some options for specific users, and what we might do to improve the program for those people and make it more accessible. And then, we also have a recommendation just for education and outreach, and there are specific groups that we can reach out to in different ways.
We did not necessarily call out older adults specifically in a section in the plan, but we do have a goal that addresses meeting the needs of populations that are more likely to use transit. And that is older adults, people with disabilities, people who don't have a car, low income. And so, it has been grouped into that element, but the plan is really about making sure that we're building a transit system that works well for everybody. And the easiest customers for us to lose are people who can drive. And so, essentially, we want to make sure that the system works really well for folks that do have other choices and understanding that if we do that really well, it also has connections to folks who don't have other choices as well. Because they're trying to use transit right now, and they don't have the information that they need, but they're still forced onto transit. So, really, understanding that connection is really an important part of the plan. There was one more, oh, high pass. We didn't say specifically high pass, but, because we wanted to be more, since it's a 20-year plan, we didn't want to call out the specific name of the brand.
You talk about affordability.
Correct. So, it's just thinking about how do we make sure we're communicating at a higher level for the master plan itself? Because the high passes is one thing that we do that helps with affordability, but it's not the only thing necessarily that we'd want to pursue.
Could you touch on security and safety and whether, how people's, you know, what perceptions are out there from your, you know, public meetings and open houses and how you're trying to address that through the plan?
I'll let you start and then I'll...
Okay. Well, there's a couple of things. I think in terms of safety and security, this is something that UTA actually has a whole department focused on that. I think it's our feeling that we should encourage them and perhaps even make recommendations to make things more safe and secure and to feel more comfortable to people, but that it should be system-wide, not just in Salt Lake City. In terms of what we do locally, when we go out and look at, for instance, consolidating or relocating bus stops, we look for places that are well-lit, that already have lighting, et cetera, so that people are more comfortable at night. Things that don't have visual obstructions that make people feel vulnerable.
And so, along those lines, we'll do, we'll make sure that that's explicit in the things that the city does have control over, that we will make sure that it is specifically said. And any infrastructure improvements, that safety and security is taken into consideration for what the city has control over in that realm.
And then, my final question here was, there's, you know, one of the comments about kind of South Davis rapid bus transit, which I know the UTA is really pushing and focusing on. I'm not sure how much, I'm not sure if I really remember catching on the plan or not, but could you talk a little bit about that?
Well, um...
I know it's a project of UTA's more than Salt Lake's, but...
What we did with this plan is we really looked at local needs. And so, in terms of the projects that are being, that have been planned or led by others, and then some of the work that we've done, corridor work that we've done, we just looked at whether this analysis supports those projects from a local transportation perspective. So, you know, they've primarily been looked at from a regional perspective. South Davis is a good example of that. And when we looked at it, we said, "It's consistent with the analysis that we've done, but it is a big investment, and we don't make specific mode recommendations." That isn't one of the places that I don't think that we identify as a big capital investment place for the city specifically.
Because it would be the state and UTA.
Right, so that relates to the regional component of what our, or UTA is responsible for. I think Redwood Road is a good example. Redwood Road is a primary corridor for several cities in the Salt Lake Valley. It's a corridor, and it's an important corridor in Salt Lake City, but it's not our most important corridor. And so, it's understanding the regional dynamic of some corridors that do touch Salt Lake City. They are important for some regional connections for other constituents that UTA is concerned with, but not necessarily the highest priority for Salt Lake City. And I think that this plan helps to communicate that.
And the last one I've got was just, and I know that the airports got its whole redevelopment model and its whole plan that's going on out there, and you guys have thought through how that may impact the Transit Master Plan? To the extent that it's relevant, I mean...
So, largely, I think it's largely relevant, actually, in terms of the hours of operation from the input that we've had. And there are particular constraints that we are actively working on to extending the hours of operation, but the alignment doesn't change significantly under those new plans.
Yeah, it's certainly, the airport is certainly an important node, not just for Salt Lake City, but the entire valley. So, while we did not call out the investments that are happening there specifically in the plan, it doesn't mean that we can't acknowledge it in a way, but it's also much more relevant for a regional system. So, we do have confidence that when we think about what we need to do to serve Salt Lake City residents better, this plan really is focused on that. But we could certainly make sure that the airport investments get called out specifically.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Aside from the Open City, was there any other public process since it's been completed that you could speak to for the question came up? Has there been enough time for people to comment and that sort of thing?
I think so, but if people don't think so, then we want to know that. We did a lot of outreach early on in the process as we were developing the plan, and then consistently throughout, we had, you know, a couple thousand comments at least from the public. So, it was guiding the process throughout. And I think what I've experienced, at least with a lot of people, is that they're like, "Yeah, we generally support this. Did you think of this?" You know, that kind of thing. But not a lot of surprises came out of this, this plan. We have an email address that people can access at any point in time. People can also submit comments via the project website, and that's open. And then, I've just been going out and visiting folks, community councils, and anyone who wants to hear, you know, specific groups, the Accessibility Council, et cetera.
Well, we reached out, everybody who provided their email address through the process, we let them know that the plan is now available. So, they were, they, we have many ways that we did reach out to individuals who had expressed interest in the past. We also, we didn't just ask, wait for the community councils to come to us. We actually made sure that all the chairs knew if they wanted to have us come to their community council meetings, we were available to do that, and we did have a few of those meetings.
And we, and a lot of people have pretty full agendas, but we have plenty of opportunity to continue doing that and going out to the community councils. Our intent is to, I'm creating essentially a table of edits based on the comments that we've received so far. And so, what we want to do is incorporate that in any guidance from this group prior to transmitting to City Council. And then, they'll have an additional public hearing process.
Okay, so that was my, that was my next question, is after here, if we do approve, then there's a continued public process?
Correct.
Still opportunity for people to engage and still opportunity for you to incorporate those comments through the City Council's decision?
Yep.
Well, thank you so much. I'll go ahead and bring it back up to the Commission for any discussion among the Commissioners or a motion? Or action?
Well, I feel a lot better that the conversation is ongoing, that, you know, they can still take comments from the public. I think a lot of the concern is that the public wants to be heard, and if the door is still open, then that's one point that I think works well.
Yeah, I would echo those sentiments. I just think that it's, it sounds like it's a living and breathing document continuing forward, and these comments we heard tonight are important. And I would encourage, you know, to keep doing what you're doing and engaging the community because... engaging the community, because there are so many different aspects of the community, different populations that are, that are affected by transportation, that, you know, got to make sure we hear from all of those different groups. And probably outside of those groups that go to community councils as well, you know, lower-income communities and whatnot that utilize the transit systems in our, in our city are so important that they have good access to it. So, I would encourage continued engagement outside of the normal structures, I would say.
Do we wish to take action?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve this transit plan and positively recommend it to the city council.
It's, it's just a recommendation. It's not an approval, just for clarity.
Okay. The, we'll make a positive recommendation to the city council.
I'll second that.
There's a motion to second. Need discussion on the motion? Okay. We'll go and we'll start down here. Sarah?
Hi.
Ivis?
Yes.
Andres?
Hi.
Marine?
Yes.
Vice? Madam Vice? Carolyn?
I agree.
Weston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to the next item on the agenda. The 27th Street cottages zoning map amendment and subdivision and plan development at 868 East, 2700 South, oh, and 2716 South, 900 East.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This is a request for approval to develop five residential lots on two properties located at approximately 868 East, 2700 South, and 2716 South and 900 East. The project requires a zoning map amendment subdivision and plan development to see fruition. Specifically concerning the zoning map amendment, there's been a request to rezone the property from the R-17, which is a single-family residential zone, to the R-15, a little bit, little bit smaller lot size. In order to do that, a subdivision would have to occur as well. There's also been a plan development request to create a lot without street frontage. Oh, and I'm sorry, without street frontage, and also to create lots that the average lot size is 5,000 square feet. Here is a vicinity map for you. You can see the project site fronts 2700 South and 9th East. There are a couple existing homes on the property, the one in the upper left here. The proposal is to demolish that home. This is, and that's the home that fronts 27th South. This is the home that fronts 9th East, and that home is proposed to be, to remain. This photo here is from the back of the property. You can see the house to be demolished here, and you can also see the rear of the house that will remain. This property will be developed for residential use. Here's a, more of a site plan for you to show the lot configuration. We have two lots fronting on 27th South. This property here will be accessed off this, well, it says alley here, but this is just an easement. The lot that does not have street frontage, Lot 4, will have access off of this easement as well. And there's an existing duplex on this property that will gain access off of that easement. So, it's five lots, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. These are examples of the homes that the applicant has provided. This really isn't part of the decision, but I just wanted to show these to you to give you an idea of the quality of home that is proposed for that neighborhood. This project went before the Sugar House Community Council, received documentation from them, essentially stating that they liked the project. Judy Short is still here, yes, who may come up and speak to their letter that they provided. I have not received any sort of written comment from the public. I did receive a couple of phone calls, but they were just information only. And at this time, concerning this project, we recommend that the planning commission approve the subdivision and the plan development. Those fall under your purview. And we recommend that you forward a positive recommendation onto the city council for the question of the map amendment. That is a decision that they need to make. And should the map amendment, the rezone fail at the city council level, then any approvals that would be potentially received from this body tonight would become null and void. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those for you.
And this does not require a master plan amendment, because it's all single-family?
No. In terms of the rezone, and I outlined that in the staff report for you, the density meets the master plan. Therefore, a master plan amendment isn't necessary.
Can you go back to that, the slide you just had up? Oh, no, before that, I think. Yes. Can you walk through the orientation? I think I know the orientation of each property, but I want to hear it from you.
These, this, this property here will access 27th South directly. This property and this property, as well as these properties, will access off of an easement, which is an ideal situation from a transportation perspective, because it's only one curb cut there, and it's allowing access to multiple properties. This property will continue to have access off of 9th East. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then, the one that's at the bottom of the alley, or top of the alley, it faces the alley as its front?
It, probably.
Oh, we don't, we're not-
No.
We don't know how they're going to be oriented necessarily.
No.
You're just talking about, okay. So, I'm a little confused, because it's not clear.
Yeah. And we're not concerned with the orientation of the homes, if that's what you're talking about. I mean, I think it would be ideal if these two homes certainly face 2700 South. This one would most likely probably face that easement. I don't imagine that it would face these properties to the south. This, this property here is accessed off of Claiborne Circle, so I'd imagine that it would face that, that direction.
And I guess that's part of what I'm wondering. The ones on to 2700 South, it makes sense that they continue to face that street, but you're saying that's not something we're addressing here. Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I add a comment to that? So, the residential zoning districts do have front facade controls that require doors to face the streets and things like that. So, for those two properties on 2700 South, they'd have to meet those unless the planning commission specifically modifies that. So, with the plan development, it has to comply with all applicable zoning regulations that aren't otherwise modified by your approval. And those that are modified by your approval, they have to comply with whatever your approval says. So, thanks, Nick.
Yeah. I had a question about the front yard. The front yard will be whatever faces the street, right?
Typically, yes.
Okay. And then, this like, doesn't comply with the minimum?
The minimum 5,000 square feet.
For the front yard?
I don't understand your question.
Is she trying to say setback?
Yeah.
They have to meet, they have to meet all other zoning requirements for the R-15,000 district, should they receive the rezone. So, they will have to meet front yard requirement, front yard setback requirements, side yard, and rear yard. They're not asking for any sort of relaxation of that standard from you tonight.
And the plan development is really only happening, really applies to then Lot 4, is that right?
Lot 4, because it doesn't have street frontage, and the, and it also is not a lot of 5,000 square feet. The overall average of all the lots meets that 5,000 square foot.
And, okay. And if we were to, otherwise, so essentially, what the rezone does is allow them to put five, five instead of three lots on this configuration.
It allows them greater density.
Yeah.
Which is consistent with what's surrounding. It's also consistent with the master plan. That's why we support it.
Okay.
And you've run the numbers, so that if you use the setback to, so that it does, that if dwellings that are built there have the appropriate setback for the block face concerning the new, in the new zoning, you can still fit, you can still fit a home-
No, I haven't run those numbers. That's up to the developer. He'll have to meet the, he'll have to meet base zoning standards.
I mean, because we wouldn't want to subdivide it and then have it impossible to build-
They're all buildable lots.
They're all buildable lots.
Yes. Other questions?
I'm trying to find exactly what the square footage of Lot 3 and 4 are, but I'm having a hard time reading the map.
Well, lot, this lot here meets the 5,000 square foot. This is the lot that is slightly less than. It's like 49...
Well, it looks like, I mean, lots, lots 1 and 2 are both under 5,000. They're 4850.
No, they're both above 5,000 square feet. Lot 4 will be 4985. Lot 3 is right at 5,000, a little, little above 5,000. So, Lot 4 is the only one that does not meet the absolute 5,000 square foot minimum. And typically, in R-15,000, you see lots less than 5,000 square feet all over the city. I've, I've owned one of those. It's not unusual. And it's very buildable.
You're 13, minus 67. I think, I mean, based on the map on page, page am I on? 15? Of their, what they supplied. Lot, Lot 3 and 4 are each 50 by 100 roughly, for 5,000. And Lots 1 and 2 are 50 by 97, so slightly under 5,000, but not much. And Lot 5 is 100 by 50 as well. It's only, it's Lots 1 and 2 that are slightly under the 5,000, but only by 150 feet short.
Well, their plot's not showing that.
Their plot's not showing that?
No.
Okay. Well, maybe we can, if it's okay, could we invite the applicant up, and maybe the applicant could talk through their project, what they'd like to do, and maybe answer some of the questions specifically?
Yes, I'm Adam Nash. I'm the applicant of this and the next proposal.
Could you speak closer to the microphone? You could, just so we can slide forward and state your name and-
Adam Nash, 4376 South, 700 East, in Salt Lake City, Utah, 84107. And I am the applicant of this property and the project. The owner is also here, Colin Strasser. And we've been working on this project for about a year with your staff to get to this point. If you don't mind, I could just respond to some of those.
Yeah, please, whatever you'd like to add to the staff's presentation, please do. And then, if there's anything, questions, you know, we might ask you a few questions and-
So, with our original application, the map that you saw was what our original application was. At that point in time, we were going to put in a 20-foot flag portion of the lot next to that easement. But it turned out that that easement is to us, and it provides access to the interior of our property. So, we omitted the additional, like the post of the flag lot, and then put all of the homes having access onto the, we're calling it an alley, but it's an easement. And so, the way it'll sit out, so now, all the homes are what Lex was telling you. They're in excess of 5,000. The one reason that that little Lot 4 is slightly under is because it would make the backyard setback of the house that we're saving less than is required. So, we, we didn't want to push that in and then try to, I mean, well, we shouldn't do that. You know, it's, it's how the house works. As far as the orientations, the two lots that are on 2700 East will face 2700, or 27 South. They will face that. So, they'll have a full residential front, you know, front gates, that type of thing. Lot 1 itself will have a driveway. 2 will come in from that alley access, and it would have a side entrance garage. And then, 3 would come in off the alley. It would have that. Strangely enough, in 1994, I built that duplex also. And it has a car, it has four-car carport and off-street parking from the alley as well. And then, the home that is existing has a single-car driveway on 900 East that will maintain, that will remain. And then, the lot coming off of Claiborne will have a facing home to Claiborne. So, everyone's backyards go together, and everyone's fronts go the right way. So, we weren't trying to turn it inside out or anything like that. It's not a court-type development. So, we're actually not creating any new streets with our project. It's a little bit unique that way. Just a couple other thoughts that we plan this neighborhood, and Judy could tell you also. Everything south of where we're at is kind of pedestrian locked out. You can't get to 27th from the interior blocks. You have to go out to 9th East, up and around to catch to the bus stop and stuff. And so, we understand that needed in the community. So, we are also going to provide to the west boundary a sidewalk going inner, inner block, so that you can get from Claiborne and all of those interior streets to 27th. And we're doing that, it'll be private ownership, so it's just on our lot, but it'll be an easement with a sidewalk for pedestrian. Just another note, as far as home sizes go, the homes that were depicted in those drawings, they all fit all of these lots. So, the home sizes are, if it's a two-story home, it's about 3,200 feet total, all three levels, plus a two-car garage. If it's a Rambler-style home, it's close, it's about 3,200 feet, so 1,600 per level, and also a two-car garage.
Any questions for the applicant? Great. We can go and step back, and I'll go and open up the public comment portion of the hearing. We will start out here with a representative from the community council. Community council has five minutes if you'd like to present or add anything to the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Short, and I'm the land use chair for Sugar House Community Council. We like this project. It's, it's kind of a novel way to add some single-family housing, which we don't have much of. Certainly don't have much new single-family housing. I think you probably saw the corner today, and maybe if you live nearby, you're familiar with that wonderful billboard that we all wish we could take out, but we can't. So, Mr. Nash has figured out a way to build around it and add five houses. We like the fact that he is providing that sidewalk connection, because as George will tell you, there are a lot of children that cut through to Nibley School. My granddaughter was one of them. And people walk their dogs through, and it'd be nice to have that inner connection, because it is kind of a funky neighborhood with lots of long streets where you just can't get out till you're, you know, four blocks later. And he's removing some blighted homes. I think you'll see that with, with the next project. This whole area has scattered blighted homes in, mixed in with some nice ones. And so, it's nice to see some of this being cleaned up. I think the road labeled an alley on your plan is really a good solution to get access to the homes in the back. You know, the four units don't provide all that much traffic, and I think adding a couple more homes off of it won't be a problem. And a great solution to bring it to- to bring it to the court on the backside. That's really going to work well. We did fly around the neighborhood. We got a few people at the community council. We got a few email comments, which I think were put in your packet. And there really wasn't a lot of objection, other than several people did want that walkway maintained, because now the kids cut behind the billboard and behind the duplex to get over. So I hope he'll approve it.
Thank you. And then Judy, before you leave, you have a second one also here on.
For the next project.
Okay.
Did I label it wrong?
You just labeled this to him twice, the same. That's good. Are there any other comments here on this project from the public, please? If you just state your name for the record, and we'll give you two minutes for all public comments, just to keep moving efficiently. And for those of you who are here to comment, because we have a couple hands, if you do get a chance to just grab one of the cards that are by the door, fill it out so we can add your comment with the public record. It helps the meeting run smoothly. If not, I'll call on you as well. But you're fine. Go ahead and just state your name for the record and.
Mike Jamison. I own the property directly behind this development. Claiborne Circle, I'm not sure where that is, but that is Sierra Park Circle behind that. I own the property directly behind it. I'm not quite sure how they're going to access this. And I was, the first question I guess I ought to ask is if this planning commission has already set the precedent for this type of rezone, or if this is going to set the precedent. I think your property values, the people that live back there, that the properties on Sierra Park Circle are a little bit concerned about having to have, go from one neighboring house there to suddenly have five neighboring houses there. In other words, another subdivision being put in there. And I do not understand how they are going to access properties three and five. Because that is, see, that's a Sierra Park Circle right there. My property extends down there, and I assume they're going to, eminent domain, and take part of that property and blow a road and a driveway in there?
I mean, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll ask the staff a question, that question about how they're accessing that property off of Sierra, just to clarify for you.
And where are they going to park the cars for the landlocked, the other landlocked piece of property? That would be another question I would have. I mean, it seems to me, I don't want to take, I don't want to spend my whole two minutes on this, but it seems to me that trying to stick five units back in there when four would probably be substantial makes more sense to me. And it seems to me like it'd make more sense for the neighborhood. I just can't understand how you can build, allow development that landlocks pieces of property back there with no access from the street, and where are they going to park their vehicles?
Thank you.
There's, I have a bunch of other questions, but there's, right now, there's two preliminary, and I don't quite understand everything that's going on here.
Well, if you want, if you'd like to fill out one of these cards with any questions you have and pass it, as I did with the last one, I'll kind of cycle through a bunch of questions with staff. I'd be happy to ask whatever questions you may have.
Okay. I'll do that.
Just fill out one of the cards you listed and pass it down at the end.
Thank you.
Are there anyone else from the public? And please just state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Linda Thomas. I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty-five years. I have the property that is just west of this recommended project. Excuse me. And so the house, the house they're talking about taking down has been sitting empty for a while, and there's been a lot of, like, drug-type activity and homeless people staying there. So my question is, if this project is approved, how long before this building will be taken down and kind of clean up the riffraff that has been created by the home being vacant for so long? So that would be my one question, is a timeline on, from where we're at today to pretty much curtailing some of the negative activity I've been observing in the neighborhood that I didn't observe before the property became vacant. So my next question then would be, it sounds like, if we're saying one, two, three, it sounds like property number three will be coming in from what used to be a dead-end street or a circle, and that would be how that one house would then be accessed and probably would have a driveway, I'm going to guess.
I'll clarify that with.
Okay. It sounds like this, the house on Ninth East really isn't subject to any changes whatsoever. If I understand this correctly, it's just part of what they're calling a subdivision. And I'd like to say, I like the idea of this sidewalk going through from twenty-seven hundred South into the, what used to be a dead-end circle. Prior to that, the people that lived in the duplexes east of my property would simply jump over my wooden fences and cut through my yard, whether I liked it or not. And I went to a lot of effort to prevent that from continuing, because not all of it was welcomed behavior. Again, I've, I've lived in this neighborhood, and I own homes in this neighborhood. I've been a resident there for twenty-five years. I don't really see any reason it could not proceed as long as all of the people in the neighborhood have a chance for their voices to be heard, their questions to be answered. And then my number one question is, is how does this affect my property values? Is this something that would be seen as a positive, welcoming more people into the neighborhood, or is this, now we're making these little small lots and little small houses, and does it then devalue my property or my homes or my land? And so that's my concerns.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Other comments? If you want to come on. If you've got a card, just hand it down to the one sides, and I'll call people. And please state your name and the microphone for the public record, please.
My name's, my name's Gary Wilkinson. I live on the corner of Claiborne Avenue and Sierra Park Circle. I'm concerned about the increased traffic to the driveway. We've got more traffic in that area than we need now. We haven't, people come zipping around that corner, and they cut the corner. And we haven't hit a kid yet, but it's better luck than management. I really do not like the idea of the sidewalk from Sierra Park Circle to Twenty-seventh South. There's been fences there put up and down. The first fence was put up by a renter in the duplex, because he was having too much vandalism. I can tell when the fence has a hole in it, because I get lots of trash, graffiti, and I have lots of trouble with the school kids. We talk about the schoolchildren needing access. It's no longer walk to walk down to Eighth East than it is to walk to Sierra Park Circle down Claiborne to Eighth East. It would be just as close to walk Ninth East. We'll get a lot more traffic, and I said, the access, if there's only one house, will be somewhat mitigated, but Claiborne Avenue pavement is about done. I realize our current mayor has doubled the budget, but that hasn't got us on, on the edge of the city yet. So I said, for the value, for the lady on Twenty-seventh, I see her point, but those of us on Sierra Park Circle and Claiborne, that sidewalk is very bad, and it's going to increase our traffic and reduce the on-street parking that's currently mostly used. Thank you. Any questions?
We can't ask questions. We just kind of take comment, and we'll second your questions at the end. Please, sir.
My name is Kent Franzen, and I live just exactly north of the property at eight-fifty-seven East, twenty-seven hundred South. I own the fourplex there, and I look onto that red house that's sitting right there. I inquired about the meeting. I didn't receive this naturally in the mail, but I'm glad I came. I have a couple questions. Is that alley there, is it a dedicated alley? And who owns that? Is that Salt Lake City? Who maintains it? Who will maintain it? Because the, I don't know if that's a duplex or apartments there by the signs. There's a huge carport of, I believe, at least four cars, but there's a lot of traffic on that alleyway. And then you add, what, three more homes to that, and garbage cans, and da-da-da-da-da. You know, who's going to maintain that? My second question is, where's the Salt Lake boundary and the South Salt Lake boundary on this property? Does anyone know, or can tell me?
Just south and west, but it's not, this is not on the boundary.
It's past twenty-seven hundred South?
It's in Salt Lake City. Though it's around, it's entirely encompassed in Salt Lake City, the property under consideration.
This property's in Salt Lake City. Okay. And then the other concern I have is, is parking places, like this other gentleman. For some reason, the council approved my building in the seventies with lack of parking. I've asked on some conditional use to get some more parking on my duplex. It's, it's bad. I wanted to go to some property east of me, but you, the council, not you personally, but you've been nothing but difficult to work with. Now regarding this new development, I would encourage.
Just make this your last comment. Just if you'd wrap up your comments.
I would encourage that the, the house plans have at least room for, it looks like a double-car garage, and that we do two parking in front of the garage, because all the overflow parking will go down on twenty-seven hundred South. And that street is extremely busy as it is.
Okay. Thank you. The back? Great.
So my name is John Blankavort. I have a house on eight-four-four East, twenty-seven hundred South. It's about two doors down from where the development is going on. And two questions I have are, it's true that crime has picked up in the area. I get complaints too. I wondered what the mitigation plan is going to be to kind of look at that alleyway. It seems to be a place to hang out, and it might, it might get, you know, more kids hanging out there. There's graffiti on our street signs now, which I don't really like. So I want to know what the mitigation plan is for that. And also, a gentleman mentioned earlier that he's going from an R1, seven thousand to R1, five thousand. So there's basically single-family residences that required a certain amount of square footage. Now he's requesting that it be minimized to 5,000 square feet. I've seen some houses that have been developed, and it's got to do with the property values as well. That was asked earlier. Houses are very close to each other now that they're getting put up. More density. We know a lot of people are moving in. And I'd like to know, if that gets changed for this particular development, will it then be grandfathered in for other houses down the street? And would we suffer from that or take advantage of that? That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. Chapman?
Okay, I just want to point out, I'm for the project, because I know the building that they're talking about tearing down. It is a hangout for homeless and drugs, and it is a serious issue in the neighborhood. I walked the area, and one of the reasons we actually asked for a sidewalk or an easement to allow schoolkids to go through that circle to Twenty-seventh East to access the light at Twenty-seven South, Ninth East, is because they do it anyway. They do jump the fences. They go through all the yards in the neighborhood, and that's the issue. And they jump through this area, and they're being exposed right now to drugs. And that's why we like this project. It's only doubling the density, essentially. It's like two and a half homes, and they're putting in five. So it's doubling. It's not that bad. There were some concerns about traffic, about parking, but the community around it generally would like to get rid of that house. This is the quickest, fastest way to get rid of the drug house. And it's a closed-up house. So that's part of the issue. So we really like the idea of the sidewalk. It allows the kids and teenagers who use the school field for soccer to get in and out and use the light at Ninth South, or, excuse me, Ninth East and Twenty-seven South. I encourage you to approve this. And forgive me, I'm going to fight the next project.
Thanks. Mr. Franzen? Kent? Oh, you, it was you. Sorry. I got your, I got the card here and I didn't. Are there any additional comments from the public? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll invite the applicant back up, along with the staff. And, you know, for the applicant, I don't know if there's anything you specifically, you know, want to respond to that was said by any of the public comment period, if any, or if you want to, you know, that you want to have a chance to kind of weigh in at?
Certainly. Just a couple of quick answers. So the back lot does have frontage on to the circle, you know.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
In, in the public eye, it's often hard to understand that the sidewalk curb gutter and those things are like public right-of-way. And so it's hard to define, you know, where you think your property is. Most people think it's, you know, at the curb or whatever, but it actually isn't. And so we have frontage on to Claiborne, as well as the other neighbors. That is the only home that will have access to that directly, other than the sidewalk that we're proposing. All of the homes will have two-car garages. That's our commitment to the city, and it's also our economic plan for development. We addressed in our packet as one of our key components is the, supporting the Sugar House Community Council's master plan of removal of blight and reconfiguring of odd-shaped parcels and these alleys and things, and then reconfiguring them for single-family residential. So we think those are beneficial. The other thing is, our plan to remove that home and to clear the lot is, it's immediate as soon as we can get the approvals that we need to. So that, that's our plan on that.
There was a quick question about the alleyway. So it's an easement. I assume the alleyway is, remained privately owned, and so you, the owners there, will be in charge of maintaining it. Is that correct?
It's privately owned, so it'll end up being a shared driveway by three properties.
And it'll be maintained by, they'll be the ones responsible for maintaining it, shoveling it?
People who live there, it's just their driveway.
Yep.
Like asking your neighbor who takes care of his driveway.
I've got a few questions for staff, but any questions for the applicant?
Is there like a HOA set up for that, for the shared alleyway or anything, so that it maintains its? Does there need to be?
No.
Okay.
No.
To ensure that its maintenance is kept up over?
You know, I built that duplex nineteen ninety-four. It's had the access ever since then. It accesses four covered parking stalls and two additional parking stalls for the duplex. So all that's going to happen is, and, but, but it's not edge-to-edge improved. It just has like an asphalt driveway now. So with the new properties, then we'll improve the balance of it. And it'll just, it's just the driveway for the homes. It'll be seamless. You won't, you won't know that you're on an alley. It's not a, the alley like a city alley where, you know, historically, they were like, what, twenty feet wide and went the distance between all the houses. So.
And do you want to ask questions? I don't know. Timeline, the question was the timeline, and I don't know if there's, is there a city code that requires that when something's demolished, something has to be built? I don't, is there, I don't know if that's everywhere or?
So not necessarily in our purview.
Yeah, so what the city ordinance basically says is that we won't, we won't issue a demolition permit until the building permit has been reviewed and is approved. So they're going to have to get that. And then that way, the idea is that construction starts as soon as, right after the demolition. So.
And then the, the walkway, how, how exactly would that work? I think that, that seems to be a positive, a nice. I think that, that seems to be, um, a positive, a, a nice gift to the community. Um, and I didn't know how, is it gonna be like isolated from the house that, or would it be?
Yeah, we, we've done this elsewhere in a lot of communities where, for instance, uh, on 30th South and 300 East, we developed thirty homes with the little park on 300 East, but there's a schoolyard right behind us. So we took the opportunity between a couple of the homes and ran a sidewalk and they're fenced, so both sides have, you know, brand-new fence and then there's a sidewalk. It's not a very long distance. And so the property owners, it's on their property. It'll be recorded on the plat. They'll be notified when they purchase the property that it's an easement to the public. It's not, you know, for them to put a gate on or something like that. And as with all sidewalks in the city, if you have a public sidewalk on your property, you're obligated to maintain that.
Okay, and, and liability would be on the, on the homeowner?
There's no questions? Um, I think, you can go and step back if you want. I have a question for Lex, Bu Lex. One, can you just talk through, so essentially what we're, we're making, we're proving a zone that's a little bit more dense than what's currently zoned there. Um, this, you know, the, the whole kind of surrounding area is just all SR seven, one seven thousand, right? Uh, with the exception of kind of right across the street, there's the RMF thirty.
Mm-hmm.
And in view, in your view of kind of like densification or whatever the word is, how does, you know, the 5,000 lots versus 7,000 lots compare to the RMF thirty across the street?
Well, let me try to simplify this. When we were looking at whether the requested rezon was appropriate or not, we actually looked at each lot and each lot size per, by square footage. Several of these properties that border this are actually duplexes and they're on lots that are far more dense than one unit per 5,000 square feet. There's a whole range of, um, lot sizes in this area, but the request for a lot size of 5,000 square feet with one dwelling on it, unit on it, is typical of that area and it is also consistent with the density envisioned in the master plan. So when we're making the recommendation to you, we, we, we actually do some calculations to see what's actually on the ground and two, whether or not it's consistent with what the city council has adopted per the master plan.
So, just so I understand what you're saying, so you're, you're saying essentially if you go look at what's on the ground?
Mm-hmm.
Most of those properties are operating as if they were the, the R one five thousand, right?
Right.
It's not like where if you go look at like Yale Crest area, I'm looking at a bigger zoning map, like that, those lots are also R one seven thousand.
Mm-hmm.
But the character of Yale Crest is quite different from the character of 27th South and 9th East. And because 27th South and 9th East is more duplexes, which is more dense in general than kind of Princeton Avenue and those streets, that's why you feel it's appropriate to change?
Well, we, if, if the concern is, we're, we're, you're being asked to create lots that are a lot, lots and the associated density that are atypical for that area, that is not the case. It's very typical for that area and that's why we've supported the project.
Okay.
So this, I think I know the answer, but I want to clarify. So making this change, we're certainly not, it's not the first in the neighborhood to make this change and it doesn't impact the, the lots around it. This is only impacting these lots, is that correct?
It'll impact the lots around it because there will be new development on it. Um, but in terms of densities that we see in that area, it's absolutely typical.
But I'm saying it doesn't cha- if I own a property near it, it doesn't change my, what I own in, and, and the zoning that happens on my lot?
No, just, just the subject lots.
Can you, um, address the question about property values? Because obviously you're removing blight, um, and this like vacant properties are gonna be built, so that should be, uh, positive.
I, I can give you my opinion.
Uh, sure.
That's the criteria for which we can use?
Yeah, there was like, there were two comments about that, so if you can address that.
I can't really.
I'm not sure it's a criteria we can use as a?
It's not. It's an interesting question and I can give you an opinion on it, but it's not a criteria by which you would make the decision as to whether or not to approve this project.
I understand that, it's just like to address the, the concerns of the public.
My, my opinion is that it would probably raise property values in the area.
Generally speaking, when you are building a, single-family homes next to single-family homes, that type of development, uh, regardless of a 1,500 to 2,000 square foot difference in lot size, doesn't make an impact on property values. The private investment going in, um, it does increase property values, so.
And, and just to make sure, the, the homes are not affordable housing, they're at the median, um, income?
Their market rate.
Right, thanks.
And just to clarify for future discussion, I, I guess I would think that would be a question that we would take under consideration if we're changing the zoning, then we're talking about the impact to the, to the neighborhood and the community, so that, is that not?
The question is whether that zone is appropriate for that location.
Isn't that kind of the same thing? Or isn't that what, what is appropriateness is? Is it going to positively impact or is it gonna negatively?
You could talk to a planner or lawyer more than me, but I don't feel like, to me, it seems like that is- I don't feel like surrounding property values is a criteria that would be-
Well, and you're also not making the decision regarding the zoning, you're just making a recommendation. Now the city council can take those type of questions into consideration in their decision, but it, it doesn't really fall into your purview.
Hmm, okay. Uh, can you speak to the, um, I think we had the homeowner, it seemed to me that what he described, that he's the house just behind on Sierra Park Circle, which if I remember from the tour was 2121 Sierra Park Circle, just 'cause I remember that, I don't know, I'm trying to remember who it was. Um, and then I asked about the parcel, I'm looking at the county's parcel map right here and it, it doesn't show necessarily direct access from that property onto Sierra Park Circle. Um, and you indicated that there was, that that has been taken care of. And then the gentleman that was here who said he owned that, I, I understood that he owned that house. He was talking about eminent domain or, or something. I just, I just, I assumed that it's all been taken care of.
I don't know where Sierra Park Circle is. Is that Clayton Circle?
That's the one right behind it. It says Sierra Park Circle on the, the map.
It goes from Clayton and then it turns into Sierra Park.
It's the same street, looks like it just changed its name.
As it goes up and does the L.
Where it says Claiborne Circle here, that's actually Sierra Park Circle?
That's what this county map says.
Yeah, I'm gonna let the applicant talk about that access.
The property does, it touches the, the public right-of-way and so we're just proposing a standard twenty-foot or eighteen-foot width driveway to that point.
And, and, and the plat has been reviewed by city engineering, it's been reviewed by transportation?
And city attorney.
And, no, not yet, but.
So Lex, we looked at this plat and my recollection when we had this conversation was that there was direct access, but as I'm looking at the county's, county recorder's mapping, um, this may be a, a real concern that Commissioner Clark is raising. It's, it, it's, my recollection is that what I saw on the plat looks different than what I'm seeing now and I, I'm not sure why.
Well, the plat's inconsistent, first of all. The plat maps show gaps and overlaps and several things. We've had the property surveyed, we pulled the maps, we understand what the dedicated roads are that are around us. Uh, we, you know, we've certified that and filed a record of survey with the, the city and the county. But you know what? We can perfect that further, we're not opposed to that. You know, we'll work it out with the neighbor, you know? There's some landscape things and some fencing things that we need to work out with neighbors. Um, you know, unless it's an obstructionist viewpoint, I can't imagine that they won't want to just work with us. Um, the other thing that I want to point out and I think Lex made a good point of it, so we're talking about five single-family homes and Sierra Park Circle has, it has six duplexes on it. So I mean, what happened in nineteen ninety-four is this area was developed in the R two zone and that's why you have this disparity of all these lot sizes. It only had the R one seven put on top of it by the city when they annexed this whole area. It didn't mean that all the homes that are under it are fit, the R one seven zone, they do not. There's commercial uses, there are multifamily uses, there's single-family, there's many, many, many non-conforming duplexes. We're, we're just talking about coming in with straightforward, with single-family residential homes on lots that are equal to or greater than and less than some of the neighbors.
So if we're approving the, uh, the planned development portion of it and the subdivision portion of it and the owner cannot get access to that lot three because of the way the county is done and the neighbor decides to really dig in their heels, that's sort of a problem for the property owner and not a pro- I mean, that's not something that, our problem, right? That would be his problem, that he can't now access his property.
Correct. And there would not be eminent domain in any event?
Yeah.
Yeah, the city would have to find a public purpose to do eminent domain, I don't know.
No, it's not gonna happen. Um, if there is a question about that, you can condition the, if you choose to approve the planned development, you can condition that approval that, that, that access is, is verified and confirmed and without it, i- if you do that, then there is no approval, right? Because then they can't do that. They can, they couldn't meet that condition.
Okay. And then, um, and Lex, just to get back to my specific question, so would you say R one five thousand is more or less dense than RMF thirty in a general philosophical
It's less dense.
It's less dense?
Right.
So there's a lot of RMF, what I'm getting is there's a lot of, there's RMF thirty right across the street, a lot of it.
Residential multifamily, this is a single-family zone.
So you're going, but there's a lot of it.
Yeah, there is.
So you're putting in a less dense zone next to a place that has a lot of other denser zoning.
Correct.
Right across the street.
Correct.
That's all I'm trying to get with that question. Okay, uh, any other questions for, great, I'll, um, you guys go step back and bring it back for discussion with the commission or a motion?
Next, Lex.
I think, um, there, there's a lot of really good points that were raised that were kind of concerning, but I think the, the owner, uh, builder is aware of those and, um, he knows that there might be some things he needs to work at to make sure everything turns out well. And, um, as long as he's aware, I'm, you know, I'm in favor of this, but.
I just want to say I really appreciate how the owner or the builder seems to be really trying to work with the neighbors and, uh, he seems to be taking comments into consideration. I really like someone who wants to be a good neighbor, so not everyone's gonna be happy, but it's, it looks like he's trying and I appreciate that.
I would agree, I think it's, I think it'll be a good asset to the community. I think the, the walkway, um, seems to be, um, positive. I, I think it's gonna help the community and, um, the lot seems small to me, but hey, if you can fit a house on it and sell it, that's good on ya. Um, so I, I'd be ready to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I just add one quick little tidbit relating to, to the motion? Because it is a planned development, at least portions of this motion will be, um, in the motion, will you clarify that, that the planned development, if I'm assuming based on your comment, you're making a motion to approve and that's accepted, um, that the planned development, uh, only, that all other zoning regulate, applicable zoning regulations, um, apply and only those that are specifically modified in this staff report are, are, are modified? Just a technical thing for our approval?
And the, and the verified access to Sierra Park Circle.
Okay, I'll give this a whirl. Based on the analysis and findings listed in the staff report, testimony and proposal presented, I move that the planning commission approve the subdivision and planned development requests as proposed and forward a positive recommendation on the city council regarding, onto the city council regarding the zoning plat, map amendment request to rezon the property from R one seven thousand to R one five thousand. If the city council does not approve the zoning map amendment request, any approval by the planning commission of the planned development and subdivision requests become null and void. The planning commission finds that the proposed, uh, project complies with, uh, the review standards as demonstrated in attachments E, F, and G on the staff report. And the approval of the planned development and subdivision requests is subject to the following conditions, uh, listed on the staff report. Um, and in addition, um, the confirmation of access to Sierra Park Circle and that, uh, we're approving this as a planned development and all the other zoning, uh, requirements still apply that are not modified by the planned development.
Perfect.
I second that.
Uh, we have a motion to second, you guys did it opposite ends, which is its own deal. So Weston, you're gonna have to vote first on your motion.
Yes.
Okay, Carolyn?
Agree.
Maureen?
Yes.
Andre?
Aye.
Ivis?
Yes.
Sarah?
I say yes.
Uh, motion carries, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the, uh, last item on our agenda, Cottage Court Development, zoning map subdivision and planned development at approximately thirty-one oh one South, nine
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. So I'm here to present the Cottage Court Development. It's a very similar project in terms of development profile to the one you just heard with some notable differences that I'll touch on. The applicant, same applicant, uh, is requesting a zoning map amendment from R one seven thousand to R one five thousand, uh, approval of preliminary subdivision plat and a planned development approval. Uh, then the planned development approval will be for the creation of a number of lots without street frontage, um, the ability to have lots that average 5,000 square feet across the development instead of each lot needing to specifically and each lot specifically to be 5,000 square feet or more. Uh, they all are very close, but just to be sure. And for, uh, some relief from yard or required yards. Locator map, uh, the street there on the left side, this is 9th South. Um, the location is 9th South, just north of thirty-first South, oh, sorry, thirty-third South, excuse me, 9th.
Thank you.
I got confused, it says, it says South 9th, but it's South 9th East, whatever. Not whatever, but anyways, 9th East, South 9th East, just north of Thirty-third South. Nailed it. Uh, this is an aerial image of the site itself. Uh, these two properties here and the, so this direction up here is north, this direction down here is south. These two southernmost properties, um, were still on the site at the time this aerial photograph was taken, it's about 2014. Uh, they have since been removed. One was, uh, fairly damaged by fire and the other had fallen into some disrepair and had become, uh, a place of habitual crime and other bad stuff. It's kind of a running theme in our two projects today. Uh, this upper photograph here is a picture of those two southernmost sites now stripped of the homes. These other, there are two homes that still exist on the site. Um, the, the one, uh, here on the right side of the screen is the southernmost of the two and then this one is the one to the north. So what the applicant is proposing is the development of sixteen lots in two separate phases with all the lots being served by a private drive or eight each of the lots being served by one of two private drives. Development in two phases with the southernmost happening first. The southernmost is here on the right side of the screen. The, the applicant also supplied a landscape plan to give a little bit more kind of clear image of what it might look like in development. Uh, all the houses will be, will have garages which will- All the houses will be, will have garages which will be served off the private drive, so it will actually reduce the number of curb cuts along, uh, Ninth East from four for the four different homes to two. And the properties that are directly fronting onto Ninth East, uh, will, will have, uh, kind of their front facades will face onto Ninth East and then they, they have side access garages. So it's not as if you'd be driving down Ninth East and looking at the sides of four houses in a row. Much like with the previous applicant, application, uh, the applicant supplied some images of what the houses may look like, the developer, that the applicant, uh, is getting the lots entitled for use by a home builder. Um, the home builder will likely be drawing their inspiration for the houses from these, um, but wanted to kind of make sure that we got through this step of the process before investing the capital in developing site-specific home plans, and they can probably speak more to that. The project was seen and presented to Sugar House Community Council, both the land use committee and the community council as a whole, um, they were generally in favor, and I think Judy is still here to speak a little bit more to their opinion of the project, but based on the, uh, kind of the staff report and our analysis, staff is recommending approval of the planned development and preliminary plat and a favorable recommendation for the rezone request, and I'd be happy to take whatever questions you might have.
Questions from the commission? Uh, so the lots off Gregson Ave, I guess it'll be on the back of the lot where you can't really see, but the, kind of the boundaries of this development?
To the, um, what I guess would be the east?
Yeah, the east and then the, uh, yeah, I guess mostly the east. Those are all the spec, special development or special development residential pattern or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Do you, how large, do you know how large those lots are roughly? Did you look at that?
I, I did an analysis of the surrounding lots, um, unfortunately I didn't grab the map down here where I jotted all the lot sizes down, but much with the previous application, uh, there are a number of houses that are, either have, that are either on lots that are smaller than five thousand square feet, are duplexes on lots where the net density is four to six thousand units per acre, or actually across Ninth East from here, that's, the, the city boundary is right on North, on, on Ninth East here, so across the street is in county, there's a number of larger parcels, but those have anywhere from two to six units of residential, so the, the density is, in staff's opinion, in keeping with the area as a whole.
Keeping with Gregson and Lincoln Street in particular?
Yes. The four houses that, um, the side of the house, uh, is on nine hundred east? These ones right down? Yeah, what requirements do those four houses, do they have any special requirements since they're, the side is facing nine hundred east? So in a, in residential, single-family residential districts, there's a requirement that, um, the front door faced the street, and that's not something that's been requested to be modified through this planned development, so it's the expectation in order to be, you know, built, that they would, the front of the house will face the street and simply the garage access will be off the side.
Oh, okay. Well, is this the same deal as that the planned development we're approving is just the access to properties that don't have street frontage? Is that essentially what?
It's the access to properties that, it's approving properties that don't have direct frontage onto the street. The applicants also requested some relief from the required yards, um, which is, I think I've outlined, let me get your page number here. So if you go to the table on page thirty, excuse me, where it talks about the zoning ordinance standards, um, they are requesting some relief from the front side and rear yard requirements for different lots. But yeah, so it's essentially lots without frontage, some relief from yards, and then just making sure that if there's a lot that's, say, forty-nine, four thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet, the, the average across the entire development is five thousand square feet per unit or larger. Do you know what the difference will be, 'cause, so you're, uh, requesting relief on the, the front yard of those four houses facing nine hundred east, is that part of it, is that what I'm understanding? That's correct. So the setback for that, I think you have at ten feet? What, do you know what the, there's, uh, two other homes it looks like facing nine hundred east, um, that, that, that are right next to this development, do you know what that, that setback is? I mean, will, it will be substantially different? It'll be different, but the ones that are there don't, are currently non-compliant, so they're not, if, if they were, they're not the twenty feet back that's currently required. Oh, okay.
So we're going from, we're going down to five thousand square feet, although the lots there, we don't know that, we, the average square footage is one per five thousand.
Mm-hmm. I mean, they're, they are, all of them are--
Across the whole development, but not individually, they're all smaller than five thousand square feet.
Well, they're, they're, they're not all smaller than five thousand square feet, 'cause then the average wouldn't be five thousand square feet, but they're, they're all extremely close.
Do we know those, the ranges of sizes?
Uh, I believe it's like five thousand two hundred square feet to like forty-nine thousand square feet, sorry, forty-nine hundred, excuse me, square feet. I mean, they're, they're all extremely close to five thousand square feet, but, you know.
'Cause then they're, I mean, the, the relief they're really requesting is to go from kind of a four-foot and ten-yard setbacks to five-foot side yards, and then from a twenty-foot rear yard setback to a fifteen-foot rear yard setback.
Mm-hmm.
But there's this, and they need those still, but there's, even though there's still five thousand, I wonder why they need all those for every property, but I'm, I guess I'm not looking at the development plan right, and still, but still managing, why they need, they need all those, but they're still, I have a hard time balancing, but I guess I don't have, knowing without how much use for each footage lot is. If they're going down to R one five thousand, why they would need those additional setback reductions as well to still fit houses, 'cause there's a ton of houses on R one five thousand lots. I live on one west end, so I know it's possible, um, so, why, you know, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So the side, and I, I can let the applicant speak a little bit more specifically to this, um, the side yards, they've requested some reductions in order to facilitate a more, I guess, balanced architectural composition on the front facade, uh, understanding that the, there's a restriction on the width of the, the ratio of the width of the garage door to the width of the entire house. They've asked for a little bit more room so that it's not exactly a fifty percent and fifty percent garage door to facade, they can just make a little bit nicer-looking product.
Okay. Additional questions from the commission?
I have a question about the, the street, um, 'cause it was mentioned that it's not wide enough for like the trash collection from the city, um.
Yeah, again, I can let the app, I mean, when the applicant comes up, they can probably speak in more detail to this. It, they, they won't, the city will not, 'cause it's this private drive, the city will not offer trash service down, that the residents will be required to take their bins out to Ninth East and have them collected there. And I kind of asked this on the last project, but is there no requirement when we do some, a subdivision like this and turn it inward and add a street that is a private street, but there's no requirement that an HOA is created for the maintenance of that alleyway? I mean, it seems like, I, I, I wouldn't want to give the impression to somebody buying that house that the city takes care of this and they don't, and then they're gonna call the city complaining that their street's not being plowed.
Right, and there, there's, we can't really require someone to establish an HOA. You know, the, the property owner has a right to determine, um, how the long-term maintenance and management of that property is gonna happen. Um, and so for our role, um, is the only thing where we can require things like an HOA is through a condominium process, and, and we can't force someone into that process, so.
This may be something that's already been discussed, but, um, do we need to worry about things like access to ambulances or fire trucks in this situation?
So the, the plat and kind of site plan was routed out to fire, was routed around to city departments. I did not receive comments back from fire expressing that concern, but when it comes in for permitting, you know, I don't know, it, it will have to meet whatever requirements it has to meet to get built, but I didn't receive comments to that effect from fire.
Right, I was just gonna, that, that roadway width, driveway width, whatever we're calling it, has to meet the minimum design standards to get, uh, a fire truck back there and be able to turn around, and so similar to the last project, if there's a requirement that can't be met, they can't do the project, right? And so those are usually the details that are, uh, discovered and, and worked out through the building permit process, but, uh, fire, uh, review, or fire did do a review on this project, it sounds like, and if they didn't identify anything, they probably don't have any concerns in terms of finding a solution, so.
Okay. Uh, have the applicant come up if you want to add anything to the presentation and? Yeah, well, applicant first, so you're up, if you want to add anything to his presentation and, uh, if there's any questions from the commission for the applicant before we go to public comment?
Again, my name's Adam Nash, um, I'm also the owner of this property as well as the developer and the applicant in this case. If I could just address a few of those concerns, so different than the last one, this one will have a, a driveway maintenance agreement, and it will be recorded with the properties. The other property doesn't have the same characteristics, it just had like a couple homes sharing one driveway. This has, you know, that's a, a component of this development and it has to be maintained and have that integrity, and so we're providing that, and that'll be done with the recording of the plat. There'll be a, a maintenance agreement that discusses, you know, long-term and short-term maintenance, obligations of the parties to keep it clear, to keep it, uh, you know, garbage off of it, not to park, uh, abandoned cars, I mean, there's a list of things, it's, it's what you would think that it should be. The other, the other project was just a little, it's just different, but in this one, it's the same. With regards to a couple of things, so we did the study with, uh, the planning, uh, planning staff, and we came up with the fact that, um, there's numerous lots, particularly on the interior streets in the neighborhood and on the east side of nine hundred east, that they're on lots that are fifty-eight hundred to eight thousand square feet, and again, they're duplexes, and so their net effect is that you have homes that are using twenty-five hundred to four thousand square feet, so our density is consistent with what's happened in, in the community. Again, that area was developed in that R two zone, which is why now it's in that SR one zone, because none of the homes fit the R one seven. Virtually, virtually none of them have a seven thousand foot lot, and almost all of them are duplexes. There's like two or three single-family homes that are but us and then there's a lot. So we thought that this is a good fit. We did consider coming in initially and asking for a multifamily zone, um, because it's a very busy street, we're right next to a very large, uh, uh, church property, the property to the south of us and extending into the blocks has been turned into oceans of asphalt and parking lots, so our, you know, our homes aren't a detraction as much as like interior, things like that, and on the other side of the church, it's all, uh, condominiums and everything on, you know, lots of stuff on the west side of the road are as well. So again, we think we're taking a leap of faith to come in here and do multi, or do single-family residential. We believe that there is a, a need for a single-family home, uh, again, in following with the Sugar House Community Council, their recommendation, so what happens is historically you have all these like bowling alley-shaped lots, and then, uh, you'll have a flag lot, and then you'll have like a lot that's forty-three feet wide and two-hundred-and-fifty-two feet long. Well, the Sugar House master plan calls for those to be assembled and to be replatted, and so that was kind of our guidance in working with Judy from the very beginning on this. I don't want to get long-winded on this, but, you know, we're, we're coming in, the lot sizes are, we do have a minimum of five thousand, uh, we've reworked the plat, um, we meet all the requirements of the R one five, so we're actually not asking for any consideration on the lot sizes, 'cause we, we run fifty, or five thousand to about fifty-four hundred square feet per lot. The larger lots are the corner lots because they need more room. And then just to follow up why we need the, uh, relief on the, the setbacks, so historically these homes were built very narrow and didn't have garages or had a one-car garage in the back, that's why the side yards were six and ten, because the ten-foot side would go against the neighbor's ten-foot side and then they could both drive to their, their cars off of the road, but they didn't even have garages. The homes we're proposing are homes that will all have two-car attached garages with two-car driveways in front of them. That's why we need the extra room, because otherwise we were building houses that are insufficient for what the market wants right now, we would be building houses with one-car garages, and we're not interested to do that. We don't, I don't think our homeowners want that, and that's not it. They can go live in a transit-oriented development and walk and take the tracks and stuff, that's not what these people want, so. We're, we're excited about this, I do want to point out that, and Judy didn't tell you, this is the only time in my, I started in nineteen eighty-three, so in thirty-three years is the only time I ever left a community council hearing when I was applauded. I've been a lot of other things, but never applauded, and I got like the standing O, so the community was really happy about this. Gets rid of blight, brings in stability, single-family residential, owner occupied, you know, it, it, it's a great opportunity for us and for the city.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Great, you can step back, uh, we'll go ahead and invite the community council up, just we'll open the public hearing and invite the community council up.
Judy Short, again. I don't know how many of you were on the planning commission a year ago when, um, Adam brought the same parcel through, I want to say it was thirty-one oh one, but it's some, some number like that, one of those skinny lots, you know, forty-five feet wide, two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet deep, and we approved, and then you approved a flag lot. Well, that's still an awfully large lot if you break it in half with a hundred and twenty-five feet each lot deep. So this is actually a better solution, and after he was through getting our approval for that, we sort of talked among ourselves, and I think he must have heard us, we said, somebody should be doing this to some of the other parcels on this block, because this has the same problem the other corner has, where there are some empty houses, some abandoned houses. You know, houses are, were built back in the day up to the front of the street with the big backyards, probably people had gardens. Well, as people get older, they don't want a garden anymore, and the lots fall into disrepair and people don't notice what's going on, and so when we flyer the neighborhood, the street that runs back behind, those guys came up and said, thank you, thank you, thank you, because they'd been dealing with the junk in their backyards. So this is another neighborhood cleanup, it's a way to get infill housing. I have to say, my lot is, uh, six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, it's not a huge lot, my house is only sixteen hundred square feet. My house is only 1,600 square feet. But if you look at what's being built today, there aren't lots with yards around them anymore. Four feet, a 10-foot backyard is normal. I wouldn't live in a yard like that, but lots of people like it, so there's a market for it. I would hate to tell you what they're selling for. You know, we, we got three big new houses on 17th South and 16th East, 450 to 600,000 dollars, you know? So, it's nice to see families moving back into the city, so we have schoolchildren in the schools. We need a diversity, so this is a nice mix, and we like it. I think hauling your own garbage can out to the street and putting, that's how many garbage cans? A lot, three times 12? There won't be any parking on the street that day. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go and we'll open the public hearing. I do have one card here from George Chapman.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Nash for his effort to encourage the public to engage with him. He's been at the city council, or community council twice. He's tried very hard to explain his project. I don't like it, I don't think the community likes it, because it increases density from four homes in a few years ago to 16 homes now. What a big increase. I mean, I can't see any area that can handle that big of an increase. And Mr. Perrett, as you asked about firefighting, that's the big issue, why I want you to turn this project down. They're going from 10-foot side setback and 4-foot side setback to 5-foot on both sides. There's a reason for the 10-foot setback. Firefighters need to get through, and if you have a 4-foot, or excuse me, a 5-foot setback, the people are going to put in bushes or trees, and firefighters won't be able to get back. And the significant increase in density in this project actually discourages firefighting. That's not what you want to approve. So I'm actually asking you to send it back and ask for the developer to figure out a way to put in less dense housing. By the way, it is not affordable. The report says it is affordable. It is not affordable housing for 350,000-dollar homes. That's not affordable. So, I also have an issue with, the trees are not being saved, and there's a city ordinance to save mature trees. The mature vegetation is not being saved, it's being cut down. The other thing is this backyard setback. You mentioned the side setback to the west, that's not an issue, because the west-side homes actually are a little bit higher, so there's not any problem with that. But on the side, or excuse me, the backyard setback going to 15 feet, it's a problem, because those of us who have homes now have to comply with that 20-foot yard setback, and now a new home can get by with 15 feet? That's not right. So I'm asking you to send this project back to the developer to hopefully develop a compromise to have less density and allow for firefighting. There's also a water line in there, I'm not sure who's going to pay for it, and a 6-inch water line is not good for firefighting. I think 8-inch, maybe 10-inch might be required for 16 homes. So, who's going to pay for that? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on this one? Please go forward.
My name's Clark McIntosh. I've lived in that area for 30-plus years, and I'm all for this, because that has always been an eyesore, those homes along through there. One question I had is, the two homes that were on the picture, those two are going down also? Okay. I'm for this, because it'll help our neighborhood, it'll improve it, and it'll clean that mess up, and hopefully, if you approve it, then this gentleman can go across the street and clean up that other mess. It won't be an HOA thing, it sounds like. I work for an HOA, people don't like that, but I do. So they'll be held responsible for cleaning out the sidewalks and the driveway, that's what I'm gathering.
Correct.
Okay. Really, the only issue, she has a pointed issue, that's going to be a lot of garbage cans on garbage day, I guess that's just the way it is. I don't know how many people park out on this street anyway, because it is fairly narrow, it shouldn't be a big issue, but I'd like to buy one, but (laugh) I have a rental unit also in that area. But anyway, I'm all for it. It needs to be cleaned up, it's always been a mess, so, there you go, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Seeing now, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, invite the applicant and staff to come back up. Any questions from the, is an applicant, do you want to respond to any of the comments made?
Quickly, if I could.
Please.
So, I, I understand, at my age and, you know, where we grew up from, and, you know, living in the 60s and 70s, that a 350,000-dollar house sounds like it's not affordable, because our parents bought houses for 25,000, I bought my first house for 65,000. But, affordable housing, as defined by HUD, is based upon a mathematical equation that these homes certainly do fit. And so when we say it's affordable housing, it may not be the definition of Salt Lake City, but it is HUD's definition, that these are HUD-qualified affordable housing homes. Maximum loan amount for HUD, for FHA right now, 417,500 dollars, and they don't lend more than that, because that takes it out of the affordability index. So, you know, our claim doesn't, we don't need to, to argue it, we're just saying that based upon the definition of HUD, that is what it is. With regards to fire, so, the standard of fire is 150 feet before they have to do a turnaround, we are less than that. You know, the fire truck's like 65 feet long, so a fire truck pulls into this driveway, they're just going to back up. I mean, that's their only option, and we're providing hydrants. The side, the setbacks of the sides, I mean, that's probably disputable about why they're there, but the city allows for 4-foot side yards. We're just, for 4 and 10, we're just asking for 5 and 5, so that we can balance the houses out. It's also to give us the opportunity to do two-car garages. There's a specific ordinance in the text that requires a certain percentage of the garage door width that has to be held, and to even go down to a minimum double-wide garage of 16 feet, we have to have a buildable pad of 40 feet, otherwise we don't meet the mathematical standards set forth in the ordinance. So that, that's the reason for that. And then, we're, we're going to build homes bigger than 1,600 square feet, you know? They'll be 3,000 to 3,400 square feet, single level and two-story.
Ivis, do you have a question?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to just maybe hear staff about clarification of affordable housing, because again, the way the application is written, it mentions affordable housing, but it seems that the definition is not correct. And with HUD, it is market-rate housing, I just wanted to make sure that this is the case.
Right, so, I think that there are a number of different potential definitions of affordable housing. In terms of our, my staff analysis, although the, all of the applicant's submission mentions affordability a number of times, in terms of my analysis of whether or not it, the development complies with the planned development objectives, in my opinion, it doesn't comply with the affordability objective, however, it does comply with other one, like, at least two others. And so although, you know, given that there are different definitions of affordability, I think what he's citing is the idea that a house is considered affordable if it takes up, if you spend less than 30% of your income on it.
Right, but all homes then are affordable to someone, so that's not the definition.
Right.
So it's just, it is not affordable, but it's like, you know...
Can I read it to you?
Potentially less expensive.
Hey, here it is. Housing and Urban Development, definition of affordable housing. Affordable housing is housing deemed affordable to those with a median household income as state, as rated by your state, the county, the region, the municipality, which recognizes the Housing Affordability Index. In 2015, Salt Lake area median income, the Salt Lake area median income is determined by the Federal Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and is based on the U.S. Census data. The median income for, in Salt Lake County area for, or in this portion of Salt Lake County for 2015 is 72,700 dollars. Mortgage payment for a home price at 375, a 30-year loan, 20% down payment, 3.5% interest is 1,347 dollars, plus taxes and insurance, equaling about a little more than 1,700 dollars, or just over 20,000 annually. This is 215 dollars per month lower than the 32% stated by HUD. So, we can fight words all we want, but I'm telling you that this is what our national government identifies when they come in with block grants and things.
There's probably, there's more than, but I, I don't know if we need to go into it or not, I mean, the staff report doesn't make recommendation for approval for this based upon the fact that you're making affordable housing or not. And so whether or not you're making market rate or affordable housing, I think is not necessarily relevant to our discussion here tonight.
It could be, if you didn't accept staff's finding that the two other criteria were being met under the planned development ordinance, but...
Yeah, it is important, and it's a, it's a requirement of the Salt Lake, or the Sugar House Community Council. And so, you know, we did a lot of research to make sure that we could make that claim.
Ivis?
Well, yeah.
If you would like to...
I, I...
You're probably better versed on ours.
So I think it's, again, it's not, it's not, it's defined in the terms of like, yes, it's 72,000 dollars of a median income, so that means that it's affordable to someone making the median income, not someone making less. But, you know, again, I think that there was other language about why this housing is important, so it's like providing more homeownership, providing housing options, and other things. But I just wanted to make sure, because it seems like there's a discrepancy in the language. So, so that's all.
Typically be pinned to, to like, either 60% of what median income is, or 80% of what median income is, so you wouldn't even use, you would use a percentage of median income, lower than median income.
Correct, but that's for like...
But this is, this is probably not a discussion that any of us want to get into, and it probably doesn't help your case either to go into it right now, so...
Sure, well then I'll, I'll concede, you know, for sure. But, you know, the other elements are very true, we're providing stable, single-family residential, owner-occupied housing, and that is at great need in the Sugar House area.
And then, I have a question for, unless Ivis, you have additional questions about housing? No.
Oh, well, no, I mean, I did have another question, but it was just about the property, so you're demolishing like four properties, and you're the owner, so the, and there's a renter in a property, in one of those, right?
My daughter lives in one of them.
It's, it's your daughter, okay, all right.
Sorry, but she's in the master's program at the University of Utah, so someday she'll graduate. I hope, because I'm going broke. But, so, the homes and what the community council and we have discussed for years was, we started because there was a home that had been a meth house certified by the Health Department as uninhabitable. We acquired that property with full intent to clean it up, came through the process, did a flag lot subdivision. That's when the community council said, "Hey, you know, why don't you see if you can expand upon this, because we like the idea, but we're not thrilled about flag lots." So, I went to expand, well, next thing I know, the neighbor to the south, through some questionable effort by somebody, his garage burned down. Well, then multiple calls from the police and from paramedics and from emergency vehicle responses, and about five months later, his house burns down. And, I mean, it goes on and on and on, and then we have constant calls from the police about vagrants and about trash and about health, public health issues and these type of things. And so, you know, the, those two houses had to go for sure, because they're, they were health issues. And then, the other two houses, they look okay from the outside, but you know, they're built in the early, early 1900s, 1904, 1908, they are obsolete on the inside. You walk into a closet, and it used to be the front door, you walk into the hall to go down to your kitchen, I mean, it's, it's interesting, you know? You have a door that goes up into an attic that, there's nothing in the attic, there's no rafters. It's, you know, it could be, but it's not our cup of tea, you know, we want to do new housing.
Well, I'm sorry to lose those two houses, but I understand that is your choice. I'm looking at the aerial view, there are a lot of beautiful trees there. Is there any consideration in saving any of those with this project?
Most of those trees that are along 900 East will be saved. The trees that were removed were dead, or had been neglected for two, three, five years, hadn't been watered, they were standing dead. But the trees that are healthy, of course, we want to save them, I'm a, I'm a tree advocate, of course. And then we, we will plant more trees and do a wonderful landscape job. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep the big trees.
Appreciate that.
Additional questions for the applicant?
I guess I have one more question about the, because we have obviously drawings of how potentially the homes will look like, and when, when we, we were talking about, or this is something that we hear a lot, like we have like cookie cutter homes, so I'm just wondering, are you planning to have like the homes to look different from each other, or are they just...
We are. I have a representative from our building partner here, Zach Brodsky, he's with Hamlet Homes. Hamlet Homes is going to be the home builder for us, and he could enter, you know, he can discuss that, but working with the president of the company, his father, Michael, once we get this to a point that he can invest the capital without thinking it would be for waste, they fully plan upon coming up with more of a Sugar House design rather than a South Jordan design.
Zachary Brodsky with Hamlet Homes. Just like Adam was saying, at this point, we've yet to invest the capital in developing product, as we don't know if it's going to, you know, go through or not. As soon as we know that, we're going to start to invest. We've got an idea as to what we're going to build, it's not going to be a cookie cutter. They're going to be very diverse. We've got four different home plans right now, we've got rambler-style two-story, single-family. We're also designing a new product that we're going to be putting on the front on 900 East. That's going, just as Adam was discussing earlier, going to be a house with the front door facing the street. It's going to have a nice wraparound porch, really beautiful home. We haven't quite gotten to the engineering of it, we're working on renderings now. I think it's really going to be a great, great home on 900 East, it's really going to make the streets get beautiful.
Any additional questions for the applicant? You guys can go and step back, I've got a quick question for staff. Just could you, has fire, and I don't know if it's sanitation, whoever looks at trash pickup, or public utilities, who does? I should know that, but I don't. Have they both looked at the, this application?
Yeah, it was routed out to city departments. I didn't receive comments back from fire, which is, I think, typical when they don't have a comment. I did receive a comment back from sanitation, or I guess sanitation is technically in the Department of Sustainability, expressing some concern about the number of garbage cans, if in fact, I mean, essentially saying that they, they would not be offering service directly down the private drive, and that if there was going to be city service, they would have to take the cans out to the street, and if in fact, sustainability determined that they would not offer service, that the applicant would need to procure private trash collection, and that is, that's one of the conditions that came back from a, from, from the city departments, which are, I guess, put into force and effect by one of my two conditions of approval, or recommended conditions of approval.
So you mentioned number two and exhibit H. Exhibit H in our staff report?
Sorry, it's actually G, apologies. It's going to be G, and you're looking, look at page 37, it's the second kind of... It's going to be G, and you'll look at page 37, it's the second kind of heading under the Plan Development.
So I'm not seeing that really clearly articulated there, I mean, would that be something that maybe we should do as a condition to say, you know, more particularly that they, that this, that the applicant gets approval from Sustainability, is now when we would, when they, or would they, would that approval come with building permits or something else?
So, if...
Seems like Sustainability is like, oh, man.
When I read the comment, Sustainability is basically saying they've been denying permits for the reasons of having to back out. But what they say is like, so they can go and get private service.
I assume they're required by law to have some sort of trash removal service if Sustainability turns them down or denies a permit?
They are required to have something, so if, if they can't work with Sustainability to address that issue, then they have to go with a private...
Sustainability says, we just can't do this, you guys are on your own.
Yeah.
Would legally be required.
It mostly becomes a, a city liability issue, we don't want our, our drivers backing up on narrow streets and that go onto busy streets.
So if they're denied a permit, they're legally required to get private service?
Yeah.
I'm okay, I'm just asking staff, that's okay. So...
Yeah.
And you don't, you don't feel that we need to be more specific in the, as a condition of approval or condition on this thing, that we need to say you need to make sure you have get trash or service?
No, because we're not going to do things like approve billing permits and...
Not normal for you.
Yeah, it's something that they have to do, they have to figure that out, they have to provide it, so...
All do you agree?
Yeah, I was just going to say there, they will not get a certificate of occupancy from building services without having that figured out.
Trash. Okay. Any other questions for, oh, and then what about saving trees? Is there something required, is required to save trees, hug a tree along the way?
There, there is a tree protection ordinance. It kicks in at the time of development, which basically means that if you're approving a site plan before a development activity happens, you're approving what, where trees are if they've provided it. And so you're essentially through the Plan Development process or...
And if we wanted, if you wanted to save a tree, now's the time that we would make them save trees.
Yeah, so, so absent that, say this is a regular development, what would normally happen is that somebody comes into the site plan, they need to show where their existing trees are. If one of those trees is by ordinance deemed a specimen tree, so those are certain species, certain sizes of trees, then they have an option. They can either choose it, and believe it or not, the zoning administrator has the authority to modify setbacks and everything else up to 20% to accommodate those trees, just by right, without any kind of process. Or, they can basically plant an equiv, remove the tree and plant an equivalency of trees that is a two to one based on the diameter of the tree. So, for example, if there's a 24-inch diameter tree, they have to plant the equivalent of 48 inches of diameter trees, which is essentially a minimum of two-inch caliper trees that the new trees would have to be.
But none of that stuff applies because we're approving Plan Development?
And that is kind of the question, because of when that ordinance kicks in, it kicks in when they get permits. And so if, if they have an, if they have an entitlement to a site plan and approval based on, a subdivision approval based on this, then, then that is essentially trumping that requirement.
Okay. So, does the commission want to try to save trees?
Don't look at me!
You hear the...
Right, I hear Prada!
I will note that I'm, never mind, I was going to make a joke, which I won't make.
I didn't know I was going to be the hippie on the, on the commission, but...
Given our presidential conversation, I was not, that was my, I would not have guessed.
I do want to thank, oh, Nick for the information, because I had no idea that trees, trees had such an overriding authority almost on certain things, and I appreciate the information on that.
I don't know. You know, I sure like the idea of saving mature trees and not just putting in five little trees to accommodate a big one lost, but I don't, I don't know.
It's hard to make that decision when we don't really know...
That's what I'm feeling.
Where the trees are in comparison to the new development.
You know, I appreciate the...
I have good analysis.
I interrupted, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay, go ahead.
I appreciate the builder saying he likes the trees, he wants mature trees on his properties, and you know, obviously those will help with property values and things, but yeah, I don't...
Can we make a condition of approval that the developer will go through, you know, similar urban forestry requirements, the requirements that would normally apply to a lot development, such as...
Yeah, I think you can, because I think there's, I think there's a standard in there that talks about mature vegetation.
Because they could come in here and they could move, if they, you know, if he's asked to take down trees, he's got to put new ones up. I mean, it seems like those criteria already applied, we just need to make sure that criteria...
I think that you can, you can add that as a very specific condition of approval.
As a normal urban forestry development process?
Yeah, the other, so yeah, I think you have a couple of different options. One, you could take that approach where, like what you just talked about, you could also take the approach, for example, that, you know, if, if a tree isn't in the build, if a mature tree isn't in the buildable area of one of those sites, or in the roadway, middle of the roadway, that it has to be maintained and preserved during construction and things like that.
At the risk of sounding naive, correct me if I'm wrong, so, but there's still several other steps that have to go after this board anyways, going through checking with, I guess, the tree, also like the utilities or anything like that, have to be checked still?
Oh, yeah, obviously the utilities have to be in place, I think there was mention about what is the right size fire line, well, that's something that public utilities in the fire department are going to dictate.
Okay.
And, and the applicant has to do that. They're very responsible for paying for those increased pipes and everything else, so...
Very good.
Any additional questions for staff?
Did we get any, is it, I was just trying to find this, there it is, Lincoln Street is the one that's, I'm directionally confused, just south of the project?
East.
And the, east?
Yeah.
Oh, my heavens, okay, well, there we are. On Lincoln Street, those houses are, oh yeah, east, now I'm thinking today, you're right. Did anyone, because that, I guess, just where the houses seem to sit, where they're going to have to sit, those, the houses are going to be the closest to those backyards. And did any of those residents get, say anything, I didn't see any comments particularly from those residents as to the property being, or the houses being that close and overlooking their backyards?
I didn't receive either phone calls or emails.
They were notified at some point to get into the process? Okay.
Yep, they would have received both notice from the Sugar House Community Council about the application being made, of them receiving the notice of application from the city, and then they would have also received the postcard mailer advertising this meeting and giving directions to staff report and the submissions of the applicant.
Okay, thanks.
Additional questions for staff? Thank you, as always. Appreciate your service. Question, discussion on the commission? Or motion?
I'm, and, and again, I need some of the seasoned commissioners to walk me through this. I'm concerned about a, such a small setback, going from 10 feet to five feet. Is there, does that concern anybody else?
You mean the, in the, what I was just talking about, on the backs or in the front?
Well, they're, so they want to do it everywhere, so they're doing, taking four from the sides and making that five, but back, in the back, taking it 10, making it five, if I understand right.
No, I think the back one, the back is 15.
The back is 15, and the sides are then...
Back is 15, which would normally be 20 or 20, 25% of the lot or a minimum of 20 feet.
Okay.
And the sides are usually six and 10.
The sides were 10, okay.
And they're asking to shrink both sides to five.
The five, all right, I misunderstood that.
And, and there was, and I'm, I'm looking now, there is a, a comment card that came in through the Sugar House Community Council from Caitlin Ridgway that talked about the issue of second-story homes overlooking their single-story home. And that's kind of what I guess what I was getting to, is that, you know, when you're five feet to the property line and you've got two stories, then they're, they are looking right down into the...
Particularly on the east side. So on page 24, you can kind of see a rough...
Right, and the, the ones that are...
So, yeah, numbers 204, 5, 104, and 105 all have just five yards to what is the backyard of all the houses on Lincoln, when normally, it's kind of weird showing from a side yard to a backyard, normally you'd have two backyards and it would be a much bigger space.
And I wonder, I wonder if there's a, well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, is there a way to condition windows on a, to ensure that they don't overlook the property?
And I think they will have to go through another process to, when they actually build the house, to go over all that one day, or, or is this pretty much it?
Yeah, it's...
All those standards now?
It's probably just building permit, once they come in. You know, and the Planning Commission does have some options. I think one thing about this image that, page 24, that, that you brought up, is that the white squares that are numbered don't fully incorporate the entire buildable area of these lots, at least based on what the setbacks are. There's still lot coverage restrictions and things like that that kick in, but that's something to, to consider.
So are these, on that page, are these the footprints we're approving?
No.
We're not, this is just their idea of what might...
You're approving the buildable area, and that is the, you know, that in this zone, they can build 40%, I think, lot coverage if the zone gets approved.
And two-story houses, would it be normal in this zone?
They can go up to 28 feet unless the Planning Commission restricts it. So, you know, if, if there's concerns with a narrow setback of five feet in a place that normally it would be more than that, then, you know, that may be something that the Planning Commission may want to consider under the premise of it being compatible with the surrounding development.
It seemed to me when we were out driving that most of the houses were at most a story and a half, being that there's livable space on the second floor, but it's within the pitch of the roof. It's not like there aren't two full stories and then a pitch. And so I would assume a 28-foot would allow for two full stories and a pitch, so...
But if you look at that drawing right there, or the, the aerial photo, it looks like there's a two-story house there, and there's a couple others that are...
Which ones? I don't, I don't, honestly don't remember seeing two-story houses when we were there.
I think behind it.
Or around, just around the curve.
Oh, we didn't drive on that street.
Behind them on Lincoln Street.
I'm going to have to find something closer to my eyes, hold on a second here.
Okay. So there's, there's a mix, there's a mix of heights in the neighborhood.
And, okay, I'm going to, okay, I do, I do see one two-story house. And remember, I mean, a two-story house is a house that has two full floors and then a pitch on top of that.
That's what, there's, there's at least one that looks like that. One that I had noticed out there was, like you're saying, a story and a half. It looked more like an apartment building that had a garden level and a, and an upstairs. But I think there's a mix in the neighborhood as it exists.
So are we approving the, the, that side yard that I was talking about before? That's, what would that have, we are, we are approving the reduction?
Five yard along the east side is five feet.
And we're approving that as a reduction?
Which would normally be, one side would be six, one side would be 10, so it could be as little as six if the other side was 10. But you could, we, we could require that setbacks along the east side of the property to be greater as part of the Plan Development process. I would, we'll ask, let's talk, and I'll make sure we get at least hear you before we do something.
I was going to say, if we do that, then that impacts his garage size and impacts...
Well, we can, maybe, maybe not.
Right, I just want to make sure that...
Maybe, maybe not.
Right, okay.
Impact the square footage of the home, or how the home maybe would be positioned, but...
And, and so now that I understand the side yards, we're, we're going from essentially 16 feet of side yard...
On both sides.
Total, to 10, so we are dropping...
Correct, but then you typically on like, you, like those lots there would be typically a rear yard setback, which would be a 20-foot minimum.
Right.
And now they're five.
Right.
And in between the, in, in between the houses on the new development, I don't care. If you're buying a house now and you know that that's what the setback is, then that's fine. I'm more concerned about the existing homes that this new development would encroach on and, and...
But it sounds to me like the neighborhood was happy with these improvements.
Or they didn't come.
Yeah, I think the people who responded, I think, you know, sometimes people don't have the time and ability to respond, so I think that's part of our responsibility is to kind of look out for that, even if they may not have spoken. Even though I generally like, generally I would say I'm very much in favor of adding density where we can in a reasonable way, and this seems very reasonable, and I, and I, I like the project for the most part. I just, I just want to make sure that we're looking out for those, those people who have lived there. But if nobody else shares that concern, then I'm not going to...
I like the plan myself, I think it's a great proposition. There are some concerns, but you know, it was well-announced, as, as was testified before us, that, you know, they did put the announcements out, and I would hope that people would at least send a comment via email or perhaps, you know, something that we would know their, their thoughts, but as, as we've heard, a lot of the comments were in the positive from the meeting that they held previously.
I mean, would it be possible to, I, I would be curious to see if it would be still buildable if we required 10 feet instead of five on those...
Why don't we invite the applicant up back real quick? And if you could just maybe address this question about that east yard boundary, and if you would be amenable to a 10-yard, a 10-foot setback along the east side?
Or, if, if I could, move the ice bucket, so the information that you're working from is incorrect. The side yards currently are four and 10. It's not six and 10, so we're not asking to go below on both sides, we're asking for five and five. That gives us, because in the R15 zone, minimum frontage of a lot is 50 feet. And so if we take the five and five, we have a 40-foot home, that gives us an 18-foot garage door. It's just how the math works. Secondly, the homes that are to the east of us, you have to understand, they're six, eight, 10 feet higher than we are. And so it's not us looking into them, if you get my drift, I mean, it's them looking into our homes. So that's not, that's not a, a true issue, you're looking at it in a two-dimensional viewpoint. Secondly, I've agreed to these height restrictions on me before, only to have the neighbors use the ordinance that they currently live under, and they build 35-foot high garages and barns. So everyone works under the same premise here. If you put a height restriction or a side yard restriction on us, it doesn't automatically go onto them, and so we're as much in jeopardy of them.
So you're, you're putting a lot of additional properties, additional subdivisions or, you know, different individual properties on a few, you know, handful of four different lots, current existing lots.
There's six existing lots.
And I think the question is that, you know, you're, because of the way you're orienting your houses, which seemed to make sense, right, you're orienting towards the center kind of alleyway street, what would normally be a rear yard setback is become a side yard setback.
That's correct.
And that side yard setback along someone else's rear yard, where that person may have a expectation to have a somewhat private backyard, you've got a five yard, it's only five feet instead of 20 feet. And so I think the question that Commissioner Clark is trying to get at is if we, you know, because of the weird line, alignment of the, of the lots along that east side, what if we required a 10-foot setback there? How, you know, and would, but we obviously don't want to, you know, can you do what you want to do, you have a better sense about it, or is that, you know, with changing that lot to a 10 year, to a 10-foot setback, or those, just those four lots? Or is that throw a major curveball into what you're trying to do?
Yes, we cannot. I mean, we've gone to the maximum that we could and explored those ideas, but we can't if we're going to provide homes with two-car garages. Can't build a two-car garage home unless you did some weird tandem thing, which, I mean, it's a ridiculous notion, we wouldn't do that. But for us to have a two-car garage and to have two off-street parking stalls per unit, we've got to have a 50-foot wide lot with 10 feet of maximum side yards. Or, if you want... Or, if you want, you can, see, this is a plan development issue, so you could tell us that we don't have to comply to the garage percentage, and then you could reduce our, our side yard. And then we could have a house that has like a big garage door and a front door, and then we could have a narrower house.
Um, I'm not sure I'm totally following you there.
I, I, there's, I think it's a, there's a requirement that you have 50% of your, the front of the house be, no more than 50% be the garage door. And so I think if, I think you're suggesting if we eliminate that requirement, then.
On those four lots.
They can have a full.
On those four lots. Something to consider.
It is something to consider.
Was it looked at to put a garage at the end of those, of the r, road? So that it's, the garage could be a zero setback, because it could be right on the, or whatever, you know, right on the property line essentially.
Attached garage could, a, attached cannot.
Right, sure.
But detached, then we don't, we have to have six-foot separation from a detached garage to our primary structure, and then we ruin the integrity of the lot. Um, the other thing is if we make the garages go to the east side of the houses, then all of our houses have driveways across their front yards.
One, one option that the commission does have is if you choose to increase that setback, you do have the authority to to address that, uh, minimum garage width percentage too. And so, and it, it could be an exchange type of thing, right? Saying, all right, given the location of where those two houses are, and a wider, a garage that may be more than 50% of the width, uh, isn't necessarily impacting the public streets and things like that, and visually, whereas maybe the setback is a more, uh, important consideration. You, you can, you can modify that, that 50% standard too.
I mean, to me, it makes sense, because you, that, it's there, so you don't see, when you walk down the street, you see garage, 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 garage. But here, where you're putting two, these four houses at the end of these streets, it's not going to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind relaxing that standard on those, on those four lots. I think that would be a good compromise. Is that something that would work for you?
You bet. That's a great.
So doing a 10-foot side yard setback and relaxing the 50% frontage on, for garage on those.
Just for those four lots.
For those four lots.
Do we think that, and, and, and feel like 10 would address that issue of the overlook? That would, that would give enough setback to.
That's the difference.
Yeah. Okay.
Hey, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Additional discussion or motion?
I actually have one more question for the commission. We talked about not wanting these to be cookie cutter, and they offered that they were probably going to have four different um, styles to choose from. When I do the math, four down each street, it starts to feel cookie cutter to me. Is that, does that bother anybody else? Or is four enough to add variety so that they just aren't all exactly the same?
I guess my question is probably, a staff question, is how much, say, do we have and what is eventually built there?
That's a good question. Thanks, Weston, thanks. No, you're right, thanks.
Yeah, it's, so when, when you're considering conditions, it's always, they always have to go back to one of those standards. And if, if you can tie that type of thing to a standard, you know, then, then you could probably do it. Off the top of my head, I mean, let me open up what those standards are real quick.
One of them is compatibility, but, and I had asked this question before, is, is that just talking about the lot size compatibility? Or is that talking about the structure compatibility? Because it's difficult for us to make a structure compatibility decision when we don't know exactly what's going to be built.
And that's what I was, I was going to look that up. So what, what it talks about is the intensity, size, and scale. It's not really getting into kind of the, the design features of the individual buildings.
Okay.
So I, I think that if you can say that because of the, the various nature of homes there, or something, that, and tie it to size, intent, the intensity really, that's not really, it's compatible, obviously, because it's a single family, and it's mostly single family around it or more, so, um, you're really looking at that size and scale.
I mean, okay, go ahead, sorry.
I'd say just because you're building these properties that are back away from the street, I don't think, like, when you're walking, you're driving, you're going to see these are all cookie cutters. It's not going to be like, because they're, you know, they're only, they're only visible to people who are driving down the street. It's, though, it's not like you're, when you're going down 9th, you're going to see the same house 16 different times.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I appreciate what you're saying, and I guess, I guess I read the compatibility standard, you know, because when you're getting the size and scale, again, are you talking size and scale of the, of the land, or size and scale of the building?
Well, and if you're thinking about it, size and scale, and you're, you're also, and compatibility, there, my guess is there are very few, if any, duplicate houses in that neighborhood. They're all kind of one, single standalone with a different architecture. So, you know, we, I just, I just hate to take what feels like a little bit of charm in that neighborhood and just say, okay, here they are. But if it's not something we can consider, that's.
I think, I think it's a very nice thing to add. I don't know how much say we have on, on those things, but, I mean, I, I, I would love to see variety as well. I think variety is always great, helps with the overall, you know, aesthetic aspect of a neighborhood, but um, just how much power we have in that, I think is kind of the main point.
And I guess we just don't have a very clear answer on, is that what I'm gathering?
Right, like I said, I think if you can, if you can tie it to the, to the size and.
Well, I, I will, actually.
Scale of the buildings, and I think you can do that.
I will, I will, I think I can do that.
Okay.
I think I will do that. Because I would like, because I do, when we're talking about size and scale, I think one thing that always pops in my head, and I appreciate that you're trying to do two-car garages. But when we have a giant garage that, and, and I'm, and I am looking at the samples that were provided, and I understand that you're going to be investing in doing some different things. Um, and perhaps providing these samples are not helping the case. Because when I see a giant garage door, um, as the most prominent feature of these houses, I don't feel like that is the size and scale that we see for garages in this, in this community. Um, they are usually behind the house, and they are not, they are not the primary feature. Um, and so, I mean, at, at the minimum, I would try to, I, I don't know if there's a way to do it from, with our, in our purview, but I, I would say those houses along 900 East, wait, is it 900 East? I'm having a hard time finding my map here. On 900 East, I mean, I'm most concerned about those, um, really putting those garages.
The garages aren't on 900 East.
They're facing the end.
They're, they're.
Oh, they are, that's right.
Those don't face 900, so you're okay on those.
That's true. That's a good point.
Those won't have that face on 900 East.
That's good, thank you.
If you don't care about the others, then maybe there's no need.
I mean, it's not that I don't care, um, but I'm less concerned about the others, but if.
If you don't care about the integrity of the neighborhood, that's okay.
I'm not, there's no point in me arguing with myself out over here, so if nobody else agrees with me, then I will stand down. Um, but I, I speak just to see if there's other interest, and I'm getting a lot of not interest, I'm getting.
I, I don't think it's that important.
All right. Can I make one quick comment? Earlier, uh, there was a question about the HOA and roadway. One of the things that, that, that we can do is that you can require a note to be put on the plat that indicates, similar to what the applicant said, that the, that that pri, that driveway, main access alley road, whatever it's called, uh, is private and, and fully, uh, all maintenance is up to, to the property owners. That way, at least it's on their recording documents, so that when they buy thing, buy properties and sell, they, it's there, so.
So, Clark, are you going to craft a motion out of that?
Um, I will. Am I the understanding that the only thing we're really doing is giving leeway on the, uh, percentage of the facade on those back four properties? Is that?
In exchange for the.
Larger side yard setback.
And do we have a very specific leeway that we're giving on the garage facade? I mean, is it going from 50 to 60%? Or, I mean, what would, what would we do to?
I don't know that we can figure that out, because we don't know what that.
Or do we just eliminate it altogether? How do we do that?
Is going to do.
But we don't want a full garage front. They can't have the full.
Yeah, I think what, let's, let's try to think that through. 18-foot door? There you go, you can say in the garage, door be allowed to be no more than 18 feet wide.
Okay.
That's easy.
And are you going to save trees?
That's an exchange for a 10-foot side yard?
Side yard setback.
Side yard setback.
On the east property.
On those four lots on the east side.
Okay.
You were so good on your last motion, so you can do this.
You can do it.
You can do this.
Yeah, the eastern border of these most lots.
On the east side of, the east side of the east lot.
This is a test.
Okay.
And then the plat, adding the, uh, details of the private street being responsible.
Right.
Owners responsible to the, maintain the street, to the plat.
Okay, um, and then the, the tree issue. We didn't, I don't know if we ever came to a conclusion as to what we were feeling.
I liked the suggestion that any mature tree not in the buildable space be saved, is that what we said, or in the ro, you know, the road, or be preserved?
So, so basically, I, I think what the wording would be like, would be any, any, uh, I'm I'm going to say specimen tree, because that's what the ordinance says, and we can fall back on that definition. But any specimen tree that's in a required yard area, uh, be preserved. So, uh, that way, it's, it's those perimeters that you've set, and then the roadways and the building sites would be exempt from it.
Okay.
Good luck.
Michelle, are you ready? Okay. Based on the analysis and findings listed in the staff report, testimony and proposal presented, I move that the Planning Commission approve the subdivision and planned development requests as proposed, and forwarded, forward a positive recommendation on to the City Council regarding the zoning map amendment request to rezone the property from R1, 7,000 to R1, 5,000. If the City Council does not approve the zoning map amendment request, any approval by the Planning Commission of the planned development and subdivision requests become null and void. The Planning Commission finds that the proposed project complies with the review standards, as demonstrated in attachments E, F, and G of the staff report. The approval of the planned development and subdivision requests is, is subject to the following conditions, uh, as listed in the staff report, I have to say those. And, uh, and in addition, on the eastern four lots, their eastern boundary setback will be required to be 10 feet. And in exchange, an 18-foot garage door will be allowed no wider than an 18-foot garage door on the facade of just those easternmost four properties in the development. We also, yeah? Is that good, okay? Um, also, uh, any, any specimen trees that are not in the buildable area and that are in the yard, or yard areas, um, will be preserved. And recorded to the deeds of the properties will be the private street and their responsibility to maintain.
On that, on that last item, it, yeah, you were doing so good. Not recorded on the deeds, but a note put on the subdivision plat.
Note put on the subdivision plat.
That the, uh, these are private streets, and it is, uh, the owner's responsibilities to figure out snow removal, maintenance, et cetera.
Can I just accept that?
That's fine.
I accept that.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Uh, got a motion, a second? We will start here in the middle. Carolyn?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Do you want to say something?
To the developer, I really appreciate you listening and making, uh, taking our concerns into.
I need to make one quick comment, sorry. Similar to the previous one, we need to add that statement that all other zoning provisions apply. Just if, so if, if there's an amended to the motion to add that, and then the second approves, that would be great.
I will amend the amendment that, uh, this only applies to the specific planned development, um,
Standards.
Standards, and any other, uh, zoning standards still apply.
And you, and we do need to second that? I second that.
Start again. Maureen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Weston?
Yes.
Ivus?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andre?
Um, Mr. Nash, uh, I'm amazed how you've studied this, so thank you for all your inputs as well. Appreciate, uh, all your knowledge on this, so yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you.
See how easy that was? That was great. Good job.
All right, with that, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you.